Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And I will start with comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. Yes, sir.
I would like to ask if anyone's been so kind as to be a judge for the speech and debate sort of that's out there.
Hey, hey.
I've already signed up.
Can you tell us a little bit about speech and debate and maybe what a judge has to do?
It's an academic sort of thing, but they have to study all sorts of topics and the speeches are many different categories where cases improve. It's the ability to be useful for life right now. It's a very good institution. Miss White wants it. You can talk to her if you're really interested. And it's from 8:45 to 2:45 on Saturday, if you'd like to come.
8:45 to 2:45. So if you want to be a judge, you gotta let Miss White know.
I don't know anything, let Miss White know.
And I assume you're inviting not only the board, but the community as well?
Yeah, I'm inviting everybody.
Great, thank you.
You have papers if anyone's getting used to it.
Would you like to leave them up here? Maybe some on a front seat there and then a couple we could maybe take and grab those? Diane?
So I have some, a comment about something that's on the agenda, but it's at 9:45 and we likely won't be here. So is it possible to come in now? Something about the consent agenda. So requesting permission to come in. Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So definitely I would talk about this. And we just feel like we need to be more this with just without acknowledging the leadership of Patrick Phillips. We noticed that he's on the agenda, his retirement. And having had three sons go through the district, we just are so grateful and appreciative of his leadership, his connection with our kids, his responsiveness to us as parents. So we just wanted to note that. And it would be awesome and wonderful for him and his next steps, but it will be a loss for the district. And we just wanted to note that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on items not on the agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to amendments to the agenda.
So we have an amendment. We wanted to put in some legislative priorities. And I think we were going to do that either right after item seven or before. Maybe, I'm not sure.
Why don't we make it kind of a 6A after the superintendent's report?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Great. I want to take an opportunity to introduce our newest student representative. I'd like to introduce Arnell. Oh, now here I go. All right, I'll apologize ahead of time.
Well, Steve might want to take a shot at it.
But I have to cheat and look at the.
Oh.
Okay. This is Rafovic.
Who's Rafovic?
Rafovic.
That was good.
He was practicing a little earlier.
Oh, yeah. I have, I wrote down a phonetic spelling, so Arnell, sorry. I will learn it.
We'll keep working, yes, all of us.
That's my commitment. But Arnell comes to us as a junior representing the student body. And why don't you spend a couple of minutes and give us a little background?
Yeah, so I'm currently a junior at the high school. And I actually went to Chamberlain School. So this is my home field. So it's pretty cool to be back. And yeah, so I kind of, as I told them in my interviews, I kind of took high school as an opportunity to expand and experience everything. So I've taken a bunch of classes and things in all different areas. But something I've definitely had a big interest in is kind of like government and political science. So when Mr. Burke sent out the email, this opportunity, I thought it was a really great one. And, you know, it's very unique and I definitely wanted to try it out. And I contacted Alex and Mr. Young. We had some meetings and yeah, it just definitely was something I was interested in because I know our community has so much going on and it's awesome to be a part of it. So I just wanted to, you know, get my opinion through, add to the discussions and progress our agendas. So thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Well, with Alex and Arnell, we've got two great student reps. And I know you're both committed to seek feedback from your peers and provide input to some of the board agendas and priorities. So thank you both ahead of time.
Sure.
And Alex for your ongoing support.
Thank you.
So with that, announcements?
Yep. So the winter chorus concert is going to be this Sunday. The SBHS math league won their first meet this week against 13 other schools at Rice High School. The speech team won first place at the tournament in Colchester last week. They were the ones here representing, talking about their search for judges. So that was amazing. Winter sports began last week. Chamberlain students, as were in Chamberlain, were guests on Vermont Public Radio on November 29th, reading the book When Friendship Followed Me Home. And they did a great job. Thanksgiving break was from November 20th to 24th. And I have some more announcements here. Congratulations to Tuttle 5th and 6th grade spelling team for winning the state championships again this year. So lots of wins for South Burlington for the past month. Congratulations to Tuttle 7th and 8th grade spelling team for coming in first runner up in the state championships. Congratulations to Sierra Fisher, FHT middle school student, for qualifying for the Junior Olympic Nationals cross-country championships. Sierra heads to Florida to compete on December 9th. Recently, nine members from the SBHS Activities Leadership Council visited Chamberlain School before school on their early start date to read in kindergarten, help out in physical education classes, and support math and read books in 4th grade. On Monday, December 11th, from 6:30 to 7:30 PM in the SBHS School Cafeteria 2, Senior Miko Holson Helen Wong will offer an evening of mindfulness free to and open to the public. Students in our elementary school recently participated in the Hour of Code, which began as a way to get students excited about computer science and now has emerged as a worldwide effort. On Thursday, December 7th, all in South Burlington are invited to join PACT as the Allen Wood Senior Living Community at the, from 6:30 to 7:30 PM, to spend time with their residents and listen to a performance by UVM Top Cats Acapella Group. And some quick upcoming dates. The RM Central School Winter Music Program from 2nd to 5th grade is at 6:30 PM on December 8th. The early release day for elementary schools is at 12:30. And on December 15th, Chamberlain School Winter Sing-Along is at 1:30 PM.
You're getting really good at that.
We had lots of announcements today. But, you know, we'll split them up in the future.
Yeah, great. All right. Anything else? Yes.
There's, on Monday, December 11th, next Monday, there's going to be a community forum related to collective bargaining that is being sponsored by the four South Burlington representatives. It's going to be at the Tuttle Library. I'm pretty sure the time is 6:30 until 8:30. And I have a text out to confirm that time. And maybe somebody will get back to me. But in any event, it's to discuss really what's coming up in the upcoming legislative session. There are a number of different initiatives related to collective bargaining strikes, impositions, moving negotiations on health insurance to the state level, or also modifying or reforming some of the collective bargaining rules. So we're going to be discussing that and getting input from the community.
Great. And I would also like to make an announcement. My three-year term is expiring in March. And I want to announce that I will be running for reelection again. So more to come, but I appreciate serving the community and hope that I can continue to do that.
I'm following on Elizabeth's announcement. My two-year term is also up in March. And I will also be running for reelection to the board in March.
All right. Any other announcements? All right. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
So tonight, we wanted to give the board an opportunity to hear a little bit of an update on where we are currently and what we have long talked about as the pilot program to support our trauma-affected students. And as you know, with the passage of our June 6 budget, we then put in play some next steps to determine how best to move forward. Again, we had ideas, but then the forming and the beginning of that obviously was important. We walked into the beginning of the school year, obviously starting in September. And here we are, you know, three months in and wanted to give you a little bit of an update. The hard part about this, of course, is we're planning for yet another year within our budget. And how do we want to best move forward? We use the information that we currently have collected to try to determine that next step. But here joining us tonight is Joanne Godak, our Director of Student Services, and Brent Coon, where the pilot has been happening, who's the principal at Rick Marcot. So without further ado, I'd like to just allow them to provide you with an update and also an opportunity for you folks to ask questions specific to where we are with the pilot at Rick Marcot. So welcome, Brent and Joanne.
Talk about your school. We're doing more across the district than I can talk to you. I gave you a little handout.
One microphone. Yep. Yeah. If you want to turn your mic over, I think we can.
So at Central School, we were, we were continuing to struggle with students with exhibiting ongoing behaviors, most likely caused by ongoing trauma, and really having trouble regulating themselves without adult intervention. We're seeing lots of repeat visits to the office. Students that we think we would get regulated, we'd get them back on track, we'd return to their classroom, and there would be this spiral where those events would happen. So with this pilot program, we hired a BCBA, someone who has a background in behavior, to do some classroom observations, meet with students, sort of plan and help develop some programs where students would have an opportunity to learn some executive functioning skills so they could really monitor their own behavior, sort of identify when they maybe their behavior is going to get escalated, some strategies to help calm them down. So in this, the position was hired and began, I think around October 9th. So we haven't been at this very long, so it's been a short stretch of time. So the BCBA that's in this position has done a number of classroom observations, and this is all outlined in the document that Joanne gave you. Classroom observations, setting up some groups with students to work on executive functioning skills and really work with those students, collaborate with teachers. Some things we've noticed is some of the, sometimes it's students that need help with some of those regulation skills. But lots of times, we need to look at our behavior as adults and how we interact with students. And are some of the things that we're doing as teachers or administrators or behavior facilitators maybe not in the best interest of helping students regulate their behavior and access their education as best they can. So with the help of the BCBA, really looking at some of those things that we can do as adults also, just the power of our words and the way that we acknowledge students and the way we structure our classrooms, even a classroom environment. If you do a functional behavior assessment where you look at a classroom environment, even the way maybe a teacher set their classroom up could be overstimulating to a student. So having some outside eyes to look at that, have a background in that, have allowed teachers to look at how they plan instruction, how they structure their classroom, how they transition students from one activity to another. So we're continuing to work in that way to help us, to guide our students. And we're just a couple of months into this, so we hope to continue to develop some of those professional development opportunities for staff, along with some of those small group instructional pieces for students in classrooms. Sort of ties into some resiliency work that we're doing throughout the district.
And we also have a large committee that's been meeting monthly since September with Joel Van Lent, who's a psychologist and an expert with students who are lacking resiliency. We're kind of shifting the frame from trauma to resilience because we feel like that term resilience can be applied to anybody. Any one of us needs to build resilience skills, no matter what is affecting our ability to regulate. So we don't want to really target on kids because of target that were trauma, even though that's part of the issue that we're dealing with. We've reframed it to talk about building resilient schools. And with that committee, which has some administrator, all three of us are on the committee, we have representations from, representatives from every building. We've done our baseline survey on factors that research shows need to be in place so that you can have a resilient school, to see what our faculty and staff think is going on. And we did our first, first look at that data at our last meeting and really can see that there's some things that are in place. So we have some, some classroom interventions, some school-wide interventions that are in place, but not totally in place. And I think that's some of the stuff that we're seeing at Marcot when we had our BCBA looking in classrooms to see that there's some language and some things that we're doing that's working well and some things that we need to do better at. Also, part of the survey was around community linkages. So we really want to make sure that we're connected with our mental health partners and that we're really making a good, making a good effort to educate ourselves and make linkages for students who need to have that, those RAP services so they can be successful in the school. It's our plan with that group to develop a district-wide action plan, look at what's happening with the pilot at Marcot, look at what we're doing in other buildings, and make a plan for moving forward that doesn't necessarily mean more staff or more FTEs, but means what does the professional development look like for all of our staff, not just teachers? And because everyone needs to interact, bus drivers, our custodial staff, our nutrition staff, paraeducators, how do we need to be interacting differently with students who need to build resilience? And what does that look like? Joel's been doing some professional development at the elementary school at their, on their early release days. She's been rotating from school to school and it's been received very well. We're hoping to have a plan of professional development and also maybe looking at having teams, response teams at schools that can really, we can do, we can do problem solving around kids that we're struggling with. As Brent said, some of these, some of these students who really struggle are just, they're just repeating and it's, it's really hard for classroom teachers. It can, sometimes can be dangerous. It's sometimes, it's just, it's a big stressor on all the learners. And we're trying to figure out a way to train and also prepare and support teachers and students around this issue of resilience. It feels really good, the work we're doing, and I'm hoping that we can continue to move forward as a whole district and make the changes we need so everyone's, everyone can be successful.
I think this work ties together with the work with PBIS, responsive classroom mindfulness. It's all just a big umbrella of supports that we're trying to put in place for all of our students so they can access education as best, best as possible.
And some of the big learning is around when kids are not able to regulate or have experienced trauma is the, is the neurological differences in how the past practices that we've learned as educators don't really work. And so it's frustrating. You can't reprimand, you can't, you can't reinforce sometimes. You have to really pull kids in close and build relationships. It's a little bit different than, not always different, but a little bit different to deal with kids who have experienced trauma and need to build resilience. And practicing those skills, it's like, it's like learning, it's like learning to do a new, like learning to knit when you haven't knit before. It's really, it takes some practice and a lot of coaching to learn how to do these different skills. Questions for us?
Yeah, I know it's, this effort is certainly very important to allow us to meet the needs of all students. But part of what we were understanding or were, for this pilot, was to look at ways to reduce the need to have a lot of one-on-one paraeducators. In other words, to be more efficiently or more cost-effectively addressing this issue. Do we know where we are on that at this point? Is it a little too early to tell? Because, I mean, my anticipation was that we might be able to reduce FTEs and do a better job. Have our cake and eat it too.
So that would be the end goal. But two months in, I can say we haven't added any staff to Rick Marcot this year. So that's a plus because sometimes it happens in the first couple of months of school. But it's going to take that amount of training and setting up teams and doing all those things to really find the effect, to not be having the need to support kids one-on-one. At Marcot, though, we haven't had to do that.
No. And if we were to look at through PBIS and our SWISS data, which is our, how we collect our behavioral data, that's reduced this year. And I think that has to do in part with this pilot, but also in part with the work we've done. We're in our second year in December of our second year of PBIS and our work with mindfulness and continued work with responsive classrooms. So we've seen a reduction in the number of behavior referrals that have come to the office this, this year. It just seems, so I think that's a combination of all the work that we've been doing.
Yeah. PBIS, people know PBIS? Okay.
Can you, I know, I've often asked this, and when the community, I know, was kind of looking at the pilot as we presented it through the budget last year, this year, there were questions about, you know, I know the issues of trauma are manifesting themselves in behavior in the school system. But can you kind of describe the, the root causes that are evidenced here? Because I think some of this gets at to also the changing community, not only in South Burlington, but kind of around the county and the state as well. Can you speak to some of the underlying causes?
Well, I'm going to look to you guys more. I mean, I feel like there's, the kids are, students are coming, they don't come with, they may come hungry, they may come neglected, they may come abused, they may come with homeless. There, there's a lot of factors where they're coming, where their, their needs are not being met, their basic needs are not being met, or they've learned patterns of behavior because they have been neglected. So they, instead of reacting by thinking, they're reacting by responding fight or flight. I'm going to run away or I'm going to hurt somebody because that's how I've survived. So I don't know all the details of every student, but I do believe across the nation, the opiate issue is, is part of this. So adults who are addicted to opiates are not able to care for their children, they're making bad decisions and kids are exposed to bad things. And all that affects a child's ability to develop their brain normally. So they're not getting that attention to be able to feel comfort and soothe. They're getting these mixed messages that their brain develops in a way where they want to run away or they want to, and that's how they survive. And so they come to us that way. And we're like, why are these kids behaving like this? But, so we're not, we don't know all the details of every student, but, and, you know, we work with the Department of Children and Families, we work with Howard Mental Health to try and support the students and the families to make sure that everyone's needs are being met. But we don't always know everything. We deal with the kids who come to us in the best way we can.
I think we continue to have families that, their homes are not, are not stable in lots of ways. Their double, families are, more and more families having to double up, move back in with grandparents or double up with relatives for a time. So we can have families that, you know, a house that maybe is intended for five, there's nine or 10 in that house. We have fam, we have, many parents are working, both parents were working multiple jobs at different shifts. So there's that inconsistency of what, what parent's home at what time, childcare shuffles. So there's lots of factors that are happening.
And Holly mentioned incarcerated parents as well. So all of those factors.
I think that's helpful, you know, because we're, we hear it more frequently, but sometimes the community might hear one or two examples. And I think that's important to sort of know what the drivers are for kids. Bridgette?
I guess my question is, what are the sort of next steps or what's the timeline? So you're working on the pilot right now at Rick Marcot. What would you envision for next year? Are we, are we still talking, you know, further work at Rick Marcot? Will there be some kind of report in the spring as to where we are? And I guess I'm just, I'm partly thinking of that just because it sounds like, you know, we're really getting into some very good work here, partly because we are also in the middle of budget process and, and we need to be thinking about what we're allocating next year for the same work.
Well, I think in my mind, we want to keep that position in the district. I don't think we're going to be able to create a big change in the short amount of time. Whether it remains at Rick Marcot or not, I think that needs to be determined. I do believe the work that our committee is doing, where we're building an action plan and what do we need, I mean, there's representatives from each school. So what is, what is needed at Chamberlain right now? Chamberlain's got some particularly active issues going on right now. What needs to happen there? We're off, at this point, we're saying maybe we should move the resource over there for a little while. So we're trying to figure those things out, but do it in a thoughtful way so that we're, we're building the supports for the students, but also building the supports for the teachers. So we don't, we're, we're going to make an action plan that I'm hoping that by maybe, it's, it'll happen probably after the budget goes out. It'll probably won't happen until January or February because we're getting all those people together. So in my mind, keeping that one position in the district is probably important. And then from there, figuring out what to do next in terms of steps. I wouldn't, I'm really not wanting to add more FTEs to do this work. I think some of it is rethinking how we use the staff that we have and doing more professional development. But that said, we're, I'm not sure whether we would need more staff at this point. I think we haven't gotten to that point. Don't think we're asking for any more in this budget. And you're going to hear a little bit about that coming next. So, but it's a good question, Bridgette.
We're also trying to utilize some of the pieces around PBIS. We just had at Chamberlain, five staff members go to a de-escalation workshop that was offered through PBIS. And we have two staff members that are doing a year-long program to be behavior coaches. So to get training and going into classrooms. And we've targeted 2nd grade and 5th grade. And those teachers are on board. We'll have some graduate students from the University of Connecticut come in and collect data. When you, Brent was talking about, you know, what are teachers' responses to behaviors? What does the environment look like coming in and kind of objectively doing some observations and then giving feedback to classroom teachers to see if they can help shift some of their teaching practices to support students in fostering resiliency. So there are some things, you know, we're, we're looking at using some of the grant money through PBIS and working with Joanne on that as well. So trying to think about how can we do some of this work without tapping into, into the South Burlington School District budget.
And we probably will continue to work with Joel. She's been really phenomenal and really guiding us and also educating a lot of our staff. I can see us having her, and she works with other districts in that way, working with her over multiple years to really help to build the capacity. She's kind of, has this model of a trainer of trainers and making sure that everyone's, you know, ready to take this on. So she's been very helpful.
Any other board questions? Questions from the public? All right. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to agenda item 6A, the legislative priorities. Bridgette, do you want to take an initial pass at that?
And board members, I think they're, they're by your place.
Running.
Yeah. We did make copies, Bridgette, and they're there. I believe everybody has a copy.
Yeah, this is, this was the, it hasn't, I don't, I don't think I sent out an updated version after I spoke to Elizabeth. But, so this wasn't on the agenda. We had talked about it potentially being on the agenda, which is why I think we went ahead and added it in. Basically, for the public and for those who are watching, this is a, we're thinking about drafting a letter, and we are, we have drafted a letter that still needs some work to send to our legislators, both our representatives of South Burlington and Chittenden County, but also potentially the governor and some other folks ahead of the legislative session, just to sort of weigh in on some of the education-related legislation that is likely to come up in, in this session. And so I took a first crack at it. It's still in pretty rough form, but have started to get a little bit of feedback. But we wanted to do most of that feedback in public. So the letter is sort of divided up into three sections. One about labor negotiations and teacher benefits because there was a lot of talk last year, obviously, and some guidance from the governor in terms of premium splits on healthcare. And they're studying right now at the state level whether to take healthcare up to the state level and take that out of the hands of, of negotiations at the local level. And so we're sort of trying to think about our response and weigh in on that. So there's a big section that's about healthcare and negotiations more broadly around healthcare. And then there's a specific legislation piece. So right now, there's already been discussion of Kurt Wright and some others have proposed a bill that would eliminate impositions and strikes. So no impositions by school boards and no strikes by teachers. We wanted to weigh in on that. Martin also has drafted some potential legislation, sort of an alternative to that. So sort of some adjustments to the negotiating process that might make things smoother, might make things have better outcomes. So we wanted to address that. smoother, might make things have better outcomes. So we wanted to address that. We also wanted to talk about cost containment initiatives. So that was another section in the document. So there's been a lot of guidance from the state, including a letter from the governor, I think it was just last week, or maybe it was two weeks ago, maybe we got it just before, or three weeks ago, right before our last meeting, where he started to give some guidance about what he's thinking in terms of cost containment initiatives. We've heard from Secretary Holcomb that there's gonna be sort of a focus on student-to-teacher ratios, and student-to-staff ratios. So we wanted to weigh in on our thoughts on that, and other metrics that might be used to test how well school districts are doing in terms of cost containment issues. We're also sort of concerned that there may be another push for level funding of school budgets. There's already been guidance from the state that things will be adjusted, so there's likely to be a property tax increase, a significant one even in districts where there aren't increases in the school budget. So we've heard everywhere from seven to nine cents on the property tax rate, without adding in new initiatives or significant additions to the budget. And then the final piece was just, we wanted to weigh in a little bit on the timing of guidance and mandates. So last year, a lot of the things that were kind of handed down, were handed down very late in the budgeting process, you know, so we sort of heard from the governor quite late in the budgeting process that he would like schools to level fund. And there was a push to change the voting date on the school budgets from March to May. And we talk a little bit in the letter about the effect that that had on our budgeting process and the district's relationship with the community. We also talked about the fact that nearly all school districts, again, are gonna be in the same situation they were this year, where almost everyone needs to negotiate new contracts with support staff and teachers, at least based on healthcare. But for most districts, that means completely renegotiating contracts for the fiscal year that ends with 2020, because 2019 was sort of the last one that was to be included in all of these negotiations, which means that nearly every school district is gonna be starting negotiations again about a year from now, maybe a little less than a year from now. And so we were just encouraging the legislators to, if they're going to make changes to the negotiating process, really push to do them this year, so that they're not making changes or suggestions in the middle of the negotiating process, which really complicates things and can draw things out. So I won't go any deeper than that unless people want me to. That's just sort of a broad overview of what the letter covers. And then I'm happy to take feedback or other suggestions from the board. And I think the idea would be to sort of take feedback from all of you, and then sort of redraft a bit, and then send it out. I don't know, Elizabeth, if you feel like we need to have a formal approval of it at the next meeting, or whether it can be done more quickly than that. I don't know what your thoughts are on the process, but.
Timing-wise, we meet again on the 19th.
The 19th.
So, Martin, from a legislative schedule standpoint? So we could bring it back at that meeting?
Okay. Okay. Well, that makes a lot of sense then.
So any questions or comments from the board on the draft that we've got in front of us now? Alex?
Sure. If nobody else wants to go, I'll take my turn. I agreed with pretty much everything we have in here. Excuse me. I was wondering, as far as a presentation standpoint goes, how we want to present this to our legislators and our representatives. And Martin, you probably would be the expert on this, but I would imagine sending a four or five-page letter might not be as effective as shortening it into a one-page thing, and having the board's, perhaps the board's signatures at the bottom of it, so that it would have a bit more of an impact to the people who it's targeted at.
I think we should have the best of both worlds. I mean, I think we do need to add more of an introduction that hits the main points. And then providing this level of detail can be very helpful for certain legislators who are digging into it. It also shows that we've given it some deep thought. But as long as there's kind of almost like an executive summary right up front, I agree that you, some people will not read past that, and they won't just read this because of the length. But it does provide some good detail and backup for our position, so.
Okay. Thank you. And I did have a couple of other things that I'm interested in having added to the memo for a couple of specific subjects. And if I need to do some persuasion, perhaps I will. But the first one is a detail of Act 68. And in the news, it's been called, what's a phantom pupil? What's happening, or has happened in the past 15 or 20 years, is that the law says that a district's equalized pupil cannot decline by, I believe it's three and a half percent. And so a district that has a rapidly declining student body can only have a declining equalized pupil count of three and a half percent each year. So they may be losing 5% of their students every single year, or something like that. And suddenly, you get to the point where, I'm just gonna make this up as an example, you have a school district that has 50 students, but may have 100 equalized pupils. And I don't know what the exact count was, because I have to do a little bit of research on it, but I believe a significant amount of money is being spent on what are these, known as these phantom pupils. Now, Chittenden County doesn't have the issue of rapidly declining school district enrollment, so it's not really a local issue. But when the whole state comes into play, a lot of money is being given to districts that don't have the kids to educate, just because there just aren't that many kids in there anymore. And so I'm interested in knowing if the board would be interested in asking the legislature to take a look at doing some kind of modification to the legislation, so that the equalized pupil count more accurately represents the amount of kids that are in the school.
So if I'm not mistaken, that issue is not entirely addressed, but it is in some circumstances under Act 46, the consolidation. I know that that is, I just don't recall if it's getting rid of that problem entirely.
Yeah.
But I think it's worthwhile double-checking to see if, in fact, that issue is addressed. Because I'm pretty sure, and Bridgette may remember this better than I, we may have addressed that in the letter we sent three years ago. Maybe we didn't, but.
I don't remember. I skimmed through that, just to make sure that I was catching all the main headlines that were still out there. Because there were a couple of things that have been already addressed that were in there. There were a lot of things that still haven't been. But, yeah, I can go back and look.
But, yeah, I think, I do believe that it may not be entirely taken care of, but it is addressed in Act 46. We should definitely take a look to see if it's sufficiently addressed. And I'm happy to help, help Bridgette try to figure that out.
And I think, from my standpoint, one, looking at that, but then also dollarizing that impact, and potentially including, I don't know where we stand on the small schools grant at the state level.
I think the same, that it is addressed to some extent in Act 46. That if the, if schools do not consolidate, or do not have an approved merger, that that grant goes away. But I believe that if they do have a merger, it does fade away. But I have to double-check that.
Well, and then consistent with that, and Bridgette, this is just a quick note, on the cost containment initiatives, you had mentioned continuing the Act 46 process. But having heard today that the current cost of implementing the school consolidations looks like it's going to deplete the general ed fund at about $31 million, one of the things I would add to that is that that process be modified to include the timing and the magnitude of savings expected from those mergers. Because right now, it's all expenses that are depleting the general ed fund. Other comments?
Yeah, I have one more. This past year, the legislature, or rather, I should specifically say the state senate, considered but did not act on a bill to increase the age to buy tobacco products from 18 to 21. And it's something that I've been in favor for a while, but now, as a school board member, I feel like I'm responsible for the kids that are in our school, and some of them are 18, can buy cigarettes, and probably share them with their friends who are not 18. So I think that even though this appears as though this might not be something that a school board should get involved with, I would like to talk about it perhaps on the 19th, and see if we can consider acting on that as well. I've done a little bit of research. All I've done is printed off a article from The Digger and the bill itself. But if there's interest in adding this to our list of legislative requests, I would like to do that. So I think for the time being, it's just to think about it, and perhaps add it on the 19th.
Yeah, I think my only comment on that is, just in terms of, there's a lot of continuity in the current priorities around labor negotiations, benefits, and cost containment. So my only observation would be, I would look toward our administrators and our guidance counselors and health staff, whether or not they would support that legislation.
Yeah.
And, you know, whether the board addresses that or not, it might be something that comes from folks who interface with our students.
Yes.
It's a thought.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board comments?
Yeah, I had a couple of comments. Bridgette and I did meet, but I hadn't had a chance to read it real closely. And I just wanted to touch base on a couple of things. When we're talking about labor negotiations and teacher benefits, a couple of things, we talk about moving negotiations to the state level, and that it could contribute to conflict between school boards, teachers, and communities. I'm not, I'm not certain that's an argument that we should necessarily push. I'm not, I've tried to ponder if that's really what the main issue is. I don't think it's the conflict between those parties. We can think a little bit about that. And the other is, the third item that we have, the Roman numeral, small Roman numeral III, talks about negotiations, if you take away the health insurance part, you're gonna reduce the bargaining power of the school boards and such. And I don't think that's necessarily the case. I don't think it's necessarily, because it's not gonna necessarily impact the power of the school board or the association. It's just that you're gonna have less at the table to talk about. And, in fact, that almost seems a little bit in conflict with the concept that we're putting out there as far as erosion of labor rights, which we need to think, first of all, as a school. Well, yeah, as a school board, I mean, I agree with that point, but is that a point that's appropriate for a school board to make? But going back to the other one, I think that that whole explanation there can be cut.
Okay.
I think to focus in on the other points that are being made here, the one that if you have the state, my view is, the main point, and it is throughout here, is if you move that to the state, you're undermining the local control and authority and ability to manage our schools. And that means that, you know, if you have one premium split, you know, one goal for that at the state level, it doesn't take into account the different levels of salary that teachers are making across the state. Some places, it may make sense to have 15% and 85% share if teachers are making a lot less. I think in South Burlington, what we were aiming for at one point, 77-23 split, made a lot more sense here. And if you have it at the state level, you're not gonna get those nuances. And also, you, I mean, you have that in here. And I think the other point that you make, as far as the opportunities for some flexibility at the local level, very good federalist kind of argument that you made on there. I mean, I agree with that as well. But I do think we, that one's not as powerful, a little Roman numeral III, and I think we just have to think of whether we're the ones to advance the erosion of labor rights, even if we agree with that. So that's what I just had on that one, and I could.
Can I clarify something on that, Martin? Because I think the items that are laid out in state statute, that what is negotiable in labor negotiations. And then, I do think historically, that healthcare benefits in particular had been used to offset lower wages in the profession, to make it an attractive career choice for people years and years ago. Over time, that's where you started to get some local differences between wages, where it might provide some flexibility around negotiating the contribution to benefits, so that you're looking at total compensation that both attracts and retains, you know, talent. But are you, I think that's what you're saying, would still support the state statutes, but also give that local control. But, I mean, I do see it as a lever.
It's, I mean, as we often say in our negotiations, it's all money, it's all compensation, it's where you're gonna put that money. We count how much we put into health insurance. So I think that needs to be at the table when you're negotiating, because it's an entire package. If we're told by the state, three months into our negotiations, that's one of the other concerns you raised, that, oh, you're gonna be spending $20,000 per teacher, that that's all of a sudden kind of impacted, you know, that that component is there for part of this total compensation, a significant component. And it takes away the give and take in local, I think that, I mean, yeah, we should continue to negotiate that as part of total compensation.
So it's more in the context of this particular verbiage here?
Yeah, no, I completely agree with Martin, frankly. I sort of threw the kitchen sink in here of things that we had discussed, as well as just some of my own ideas, and perfectly fine with that, because I do think that the points that you're making, Elizabeth, are kind of addressed in other sections. Like, that one was one of the, frankly, the weaker arguments in the letter.
So on the next one, the labor negotiations legislation, we're talking about strikes and imposition. There's really just one main addition that I wanted to suggest here. In the middle of your paragraph, small Roman numeral I, I mean, that provision is, you're talking about the benefits of being able to impose, that in fact, and to strike, that it allows a change in the status quo, that if we don't have those tools, it's really difficult to change the status quo. And towards the end of the paragraph, you do talk about how a while ago, probably in the 70s and 80s, the strikes and threats of strikes changed the status quo very much in favor of teachers who are being paid less than the median family income. We've now used imposition to try to change the status quo recently regarding the salary grid. And there's some, I won't go into the issues you've covered in here. But you say that, that through the imposition, the board was able to make some change. And I think a key thing to remember is that the teachers still have the ability to strike, and that acts as a check on the school board on how far it might go in an imposition.
Yeah.
That, the fact that we impose, they need, you know, the teachers then need to decide, well, is this such a change that we can't live with it and are going to strike? So it's that balance of that ability to strike with that ability to impose, allows that push away from the status quo, but allows a check on, well, mainly on the teacher's side. We can't really impose after a strike, that doesn't, well, maybe we can, but, any event. So I think that's an important point to add.
Okay.
There. I did have a couple others, unless there's more comments on that particular issue. Number five under there, this is on, the salaries and benefits should be frozen at the levels in the final year of contract until a new contract is agreed.
Yeah.
You say that the increase by the same amount as a previous year, I don't believe that's the case. I think it's just the step increases.
The step increases.
Yeah. Unless, of course, a contract said that you're gonna get 2% more in a particular year. But that's not what contracts usually say. They usually put in a new base salary figure. So, and the final one, I believe, the final one I had, is in cost containment initiatives. In the third sentence, I mean, it's the second sentence, you talk about, let's see, staff salaries and benefits make up the biggest percentage of school budgets, and they are being driven up by inflation, and in particular, rising healthcare costs. Oh, actually, it's the next sentence. In this scenario, level funding almost certainly means most districts will be required to cut programming. And I would add there, and defer maintenance. I think that's a very important component of what happens if we're stuck with level funding.
Yeah.
Those are the inputs I have.
Just a quick comment, Martin, to follow on, on number five, in the labor negotiations legislation, where it says salary and benefits should be frozen until legisla- legislation, where it says salary and benefits should be frozen until a new contract agreed, should it also be frozen and retroactivity negotiated?
I think, I mean, that's, I think, a different point. I mean, I don't know that, that's a good question. I'll ponder that. But I, I think that's a very different point, though. I mean, if it's, if it's, that's part of what your negotiations are, if you're in-
But it puts pressure, it puts pressure to sort of move negotiations along. If, if retroactivity is really explicitly, you know, negotiable, and it's not automatically kind of assumed, it does put a little bit of pressure on to wrap things up.
Well, I think it is definitely negotiable. Now, now the question is whether there shouldn't be retroactivity until they're, you know, f-
Well, I guess I'll, I'll ask the board to consider whether they want to include that comment. Alex?
No, I was just going to say, if you, putting in or taking out retroactivity sort of changes the balance of power for both, one or, one or both, one side or the other. So if, if we're negotiating in August, and, you know, the, say, say the contract expires September 1st or whatever, obviously, the teachers' union is going to be very motivated to get a new contract. And so that would end up working against them. And in fact, the school board would be incentivized to delay until, well, to delay it. So it, it seems as though doing so would change the balance of power in-
Well, I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting it be eliminated, just that it be part of negotiations. Because right now, I think it's implied that-
Yeah, it's implied.
It, conversely, it, it applies all the time.
Mm-hmm.
And-
Is that true, or is it just that, that's the way it's worked out here?
Hmm.
And we've, a couple of times, we've negotiated that part, if I recall right.
I don't know. I just think, I think if we're going to have this conversation, I think it's worth-
Right.
-bringing up.
Sure. No, I, I think that's fine. I, I'm not opposed to that.
Yeah, I think we just had to carefully word it to sort of say that it, it's part of negotiations, as opposed to wanting to implement, because then it sort of goes against our, our whole argument for local control of negotiations, to say that we're then going to put that perimeter on, that it, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
So that would be kind of point six. It'd almost be a, yeah.
Other board comments? Community comments? All right, so we'll put this on the agenda for the 19th and look to approve a version to get sent off. A couple of the venues, just to consider this. I know David and I will have a meeting soon with the city, so we could, we are talking about a legislative breakfast before the session starts, so that might be an opportunity to present some highlights of this. And then we could consider a separate forum, if, if necessary.
The only thing I wanted to, sorry, I mean, I think, you know, I, I think this is great progress in providing clarity around the legislative process. You know, from my perspective, you know, some real specific awareness that I think we have to be mindful that we aren't putting in legislation that results in increases or further demands on the system that we currently are in. Now, obviously-
So you're talking about more mandates?
That's right.
Yeah.
And where sometimes we can see that it's perhaps a important, and perhaps down the road could be helpful, if it comes at us with an expected mandate, I just feel like it really, that needs to be a major component on, on legislative awareness. I, I think the other thing, and, and Martin and Bridgette, I think, and certainly Elizabeth and I have talked about it, around kind of the facility-related cost parameters and increases that we've seen are often now going to, I think, approach double digits in, in the outcome, outgoing years, in that we, we need a, we need a better response than what we're doing today. Because the response today is avoidance, which only escalates the need for further dollars to fix-
So deferred maintenance issue.
Absolutely right. So, and again, school and municipal facility, kind of stewardship and response is a big issue that I think, if we don't get on top of it, we're going to be, we're only compounding the financial stressors.
So I guess the question is whether we should add to here an issue regarding deferred maintenance?
I do know that many of you are talking about it, and even have other folks that are talking about it too, but I do think from, at least from your perspective, you've, you've been, you're, you're a district that's pretty aware of it. And I think this legislative awareness, which is exactly what you're doing, I think will yield some positive inroads about making some, some effective change for others as well, and making it happen.
So, so what would be your ideas? I mean, there's, I mean, we've talked about this. Would it be to have something in there about an assessment, that every school should have an assessment, and should be required to have a stewardship plan, that we should eliminate the moratorium on assistance and capital improvements, but there should be some prerequisites for a school to get that, such as having a stewardship pa- plan, or, I mean, is that along those lines? Or do you have something else in mind?
No, I, I think those are, those are appropriate. I, I wonder about, and again, I don't, I don't have jurisdiction over other authorities, but Vermont School Boards Insurance Trust, right, who we all pay into, they insure us. But yet, we don't, maybe there's opportunities for a stewardship plan that needs to rest there. If that's the case, then you can also be part of, you know, pooling your resources together for, you talk about eliminating the moratorium on the, on the, on the construction fund, call it a maintenance fund. I think there needs to be an establishment of that first, and some clarity around stewardship, and then be able to begin to access it. Because again, I'll be doing exactly what I said not to. If we just create money, where's that money going to come from? So I think there needs to be some appropriate phasing, assessing, stewardship, you know, work that needs to happen as a, as a first step. I'd be happy to talk more about it. I know there's, again, several of you have, we've had conversations. Again, it's often the place that's forgotten, and it, it's going to be a major, major driver in, in cost containment. We're already seeing it. You know, 60 million in Burlington, you know, 30 million in, in Williston. Again, it's, it's here.
Yeah, I mean, that does make sense to include in the cost containment piece of it.
You would give me that feedback offline, actually, yes, that, that it made sense to add a paragraph in about that, yeah.
And, and I think some of that, I mean, we're seeing exacerbated in the draw from the General Ed Fund. It's causing the $50 million hole right now, which is reserves that were tapped into last year, when the direction was given to kind of focus on level funding after budgets had been approved to present to voters. So some of those reserves, I don't know this by district or supervisory union, but some of those reserves may have been in place for maintenance. And, you know, that, those got tapped into in a big way.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, shall we move on? All right, we'll move on to agenda, item seven, the 2019 budget.
So the first piece is, just to take, take a little bit about the tax commissioners' recommended parameters, and coming around is that. And then we're going to get into the conversations of the budget. I think most of you are probably, you've heard about it in different ways, from various entities, but again, this is the tax commissioners' information, and which isn't that old. It came in late November, and provides with some clarity around some of these state factors that we're, we're looking to get clarity on. So I don't, I don't know that this is going to necessarily mean a lot. Certainly not, maybe something we can go over line by line tonight, but certainly wanted to make you aware of the documentation that's out there. John, I don't know, do you, did you, would, would you highlight anything here for the board?
Yeah, I could, I think that the most important thing to highlight here is in the second paragraph.
Yeah.
The forecasted FY19 homestead yield is 98.42, compared to 10,160 for FY18. We'll see shortly on, on the budget worksheet, what role that 98.42 plays in the tax rate calculation. But that number is, is surprisingly high to me, and that's a positive thing. I thought, and I shared this with the board, and I think on a couple of occasions, that the yield might be as low as 96.51. And I got that by trying to come up with the eight or nine cent tax rate increase that the state had telegraphed to us back in the fall, I think. The 98.42 is only a little bit more than a 3% drop from the 10,160, so that implies about a 3% increase in tax rates, all by itself, all other things being equal. So I'm a little bit puzzled by that number, and I'm very pleased at that number.
Mm-hmm.
The rest of this, the income yield went down slightly. I, I don't have a good enough handle on what the income yield, how the income yield functions and the calculation of all these numbers, but it relates to the, the percentage that income sensitized folks will pay on their taxes. And I have to wait further instructions from the state to give you any help on that one. The other one that, I didn't do a, a percentage, I think, I think I got it over here, actually. The other one that, that I'm kind of surprised at is the statewide-based non-residential tax rate. That's a, that's a pretty good increase, from $1.535 to $1.629. That's about 6, 6% increase in that number. And I, I want to make sure everybody's aware that that number, unlike the homestead, the residential tax rate, is not affected. The non-residential rate is not affected by the level of spending in the town. So that number applies to non-residential properties all across the state. It is, it is adjusted by the CLA, but it is not affected by the, the level of spending from town to town. So I, 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 they repeat again, that the average tax rate is forecasted to increase by 9.4 cents, but I don't really see how you can get that from a yield of 98.42. I'm probably wrong, and I'll, I'll be proven wrong, but it looks like that tax rate increase is, is overstated to me. And it's, it is according to the data I've got here tonight. But those are, those are the highlights I give from this particular sheet.
Thanks, John. I mean, I, I know the board will likely have a lot more questions, and we're still due common level appraisal data, and we're still due equalized pupil data, right? And so again, that, this is in part connected to the budget building process, where you don't get a lot of your, your factors until well into the process. We're hopeful to get the other two, kind of the third week of December, and that would be on the common level of appraisal. We're hopeful to get, again, by the 15th, to get equalized pupils. You know, the SEER report, also kind of in that, the special education expense reimbursement report, that is about the third week of December as well. We've seen those, though, come as late as kind of the last week in December, almost into January. And so that's kind of where we are. All right, any, any other final questions? So hearing none, let's move on to the budget. We've left a fair amount of time here, and what John and I are going to do is, we're going to walk you through. You have a pretty verbose package. We're not going to go page by page. We feel like there's a lot of information that we'll refer back to as we continue to move forward. We'll probably just quickly breeze over those, and maybe talk about a few of those pieces. But we do want to spend the majority of the time really looking at what we're calling our budget development worksheet, and make sure there's, you know, understanding of the moving parts that are currently either what we've assumed or what we think are in play. So right out of the gate, I think it's important on a budget message and direction, and again, not everybody has this, so just bear with me. I want to just make sure we're really clear about the, the message and the direction that I feel we're, we're moving. So this budget right now, tonight, is organized in the terms of presenting what we call a continued service budget and a level funded budget. This budget presentation is not yet a recommended budget, and we hope that it gives the framework for presenting and discussing budget issues, pressures, and opportunities in a directed fashion. The recommended budget will attempt to meet the stringent budget direction we have received from the state, particularly in terms of the tax rate pressures that we expect to face this year. At this date, state budget parameters need, needed to forecast the tax rate impact are not yet available, that with the exception of, we did get the equalized. No, we did not. We, we got the property yield, excuse me, and we're still waiting for the CLA equalized and the SEER report to come in. And in some cases, we've estimated these parameters that may provide guidance in the early budget development. So we have made some assumptions on either not moving the equalized, to make sure that, you know, we're appropriately moving forward. So that's, that's current direction at this point. So as we move forward, we're going to walk you through both continued service budget, taking our current staff, moving them forward with known contractual obligations, not changing any other parameters, and seeing where that rests. We're going to walk you through that. And I think it's probably best to, John and I will go back and forth again pretty quickly. Please feel free to stop us up, and if there's a question, I assume, from the public, we'll work to call on you, Elizabeth Wells, as well. So the, the first thing is student enrollment data. We have not yet gotten the, the final, although we're pretty close. We have received what we, what we would say, pretty final data on the student enrollment work. Going to go quickly, the first, the next page really is just the overall district enrollment. You can't see it here. You're going to have to refer to your pages. It's just too darn hard. On the far right side, though, John did add the, kind of the 10-year change. That may not necessarily be totally important to you. We're really looking at kind of that 17, 18, and looking at, at, at these drivers here. What then moves on is both the highs, we start with the high school. We kind of see what's happening with their enrollment, both currently and, and what's projected forward. And then, again, I'm just not going to call each one out, but moves through all of the schools with kind of that enrollment. This is an important component, because one of the things I heard, you know, from the board was being conscious of what we would say, kind of zero-based, you know, zero-based budgeting type processes. So when we do that, one of the things that we've, we have done and will continue to do as we push out the recommended, is it's based on, what do we need? What are the numbers of students? What are the professional staff we need? What are the numbers of students that need additional support, to try to make sure we're, we're appropriately doing that? For the most part, and again, John has said, for the most part, we have done what we would say, a modified zero-based budget build versus just assuming that we're going to give 2% across the board. We've typically looked at our enrollment, but there's a deeper dive this year that we've done based on kind of the, the moving parts. So that's enrollment, our tuition students.
So David, really quickly, just from a summary standpoint-
Yeah.
-for the public, we're looking at enrollment, which is not equalized pupil, but enrollment that for the 2018-19 year would be up about 14. Is that accurate?
That's right. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
So 24.84 to 20, which is a firm number, correct?
Correct.
And is that accurate, to call that kind of bodies in seats?
That's bodies in seats.
Okay.
That's right. This is not equalized.
Right now, it looks like we're anticipating 24.98, bodies in seats, as it were.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
Okay.
So the next piece here, after we get the, the resident enrollment expectation, which we think we have a pretty good handle on that now from, from McKibben, how does the, the tuition student enrollment play into this?
Hey, can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
If we can go back to McKibben, I hadn't focused so much on the elementary school, by elementary school.
Yeah.
I was just surprised to see that in the, at the peak of Chamberlain, they're expecting Chamberlain to be up to 297 students, which would represent an increase of 77 students. And that, that doesn't happen all the way, it's, happens over time, but out by 2022 or 2023, 77 students at Chamberlain. I was just kind of surprised by that number for that specific school, because that seemed like, I just didn't understand the demographic factors that were, were at play there. And, and then, and these are just sort of notes to take. I mean, I'm not asking for answers to these questions right now. But then, at Orchard, we also have a peak of 435 students. And my understanding is, we're already kind of bursting at the seams there now. And it's just something, as we go through, that we probably need to be flagging, you know, do we have the capacity if, if these- do we have the capacity, if these demographic projections really do come true, to be able to serve these students at that level if we really do think that these are correct projections? Anyway, so I just wanted to note that, sorry I didn't know.
I, I haven't studied these numbers the way Jon Stewart has. But I know he's gone back and forth several times with the demographer. And the demographer believes that, that these numbers are realistic, given the development trends in, in South Burlington. And it is surprising, I mean, to think that we could have seventy-seven more kids in this building versus a couple of years ago. And, and Orchard as well, up to four hundred and thirty-five versus the current year's four hundred. Last year's three seventy-two.
You know, you know, what's interesting is that they, McGibben also forecasts an increase of up to one thousand seventy students at the high school in twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So it seems as though they're kind of anticipating some kind of baby boom that would have happened about eighteen or maybe sixteen or fifteen years back, which I think that puts us about four years ago. And you see, that's what you saw, Bridget, at twenty twenty-two, twenty-three with the Chamberlain. I just took a very quick glance and all the elementary schools have the same trend, a big bump in the middle of the twenty-twenty's. And, and then eventually it moved to the high school, which you would expect. But I don't, I'm not aware of any sort of baby boom or...
Yeah, no, I had, and the numbers that I had seen before, I didn't go back and compare these to the ones that I had sat with John and talked about. Those were higher level numbers. It was more sort of an executive summary and it wasn't as detailed as this. And I just think we should probably, David, you and I should circle back with him and you too, John, to circle back with Jon Stewart and maybe McGibben, just to make sure that we understand the assumptions that went into that. So for example, is, is that Chamberlain number assuming that, you know, all new development in the southeast quadrant is, you know, is geared toward Chamberlain School as opposed to Markham, you know, those kinds of things? I just want to make sure that we're really clear about what assumptions went into those numbers and so that we can just kind of kick the tires one last time to make sure that we're comfortable with them.
Yeah, I think, I think your points are well taken. And I think that you'll find that the final report by McGibben will identify eligible, you know, birth, you know, kind of forecast as well as current and known developments that are either currently in the queue and likely to have build-out. Some are pretty sizable. Now, again, just because it's a large sizable development doesn't necessarily mean that everyone's going to have one or one point two students. But there are certain, those combinations of trends that eligible individuals and developments, given our current, you know, kind of history, you'll see kind of by, by school why those predictions are there.
Right, and, but some of that would be McGibben's, you know, algorithm or whatever, you know, model he's plugging things into. But some of that has to be assumptions from us that we're giving him. Because if we said to him that...
Not so much.
Well, I would, then how would he do the division?
We aren't really doing, we, we are pretty silent in this process. The demographic data collection is really done based on census, city development and open property or, or likely to be developed. Those are the, those are kind of the algorithms. We don't necessar, we haven't necessarily said, the only thing we have is historical data that we give them, like the enrollment data.
Well, then I guess my question is just one for, for Jon Stewart and from McGibben. And how is he dividing things up between the elementary schools? Because we don't have very clear lines, frankly, in terms of our districts for the new developments. I mean, as we've had this discussion several times, and in fact, that was something, I don't know where we address it tonight, but, you know, we've had a letter from someone in the community and this is a question that's been, I've asked a couple of times. How do we direct developers? When they're developing something, what to tell people? And how are we making decisions as a district where those new students are going? And, and I don't understand how McGibben would, would, what, how he made those assumptions. If we're not giving them to him, where did, how did he make those assumptions? Did he just look at a map and say, okay, this makes sense? Or did he have some specific decision that we made previously that he's using to plug that in? Because I was just surprised to see that, that Chamberlain went up so much. Not that it's a bad thing, I, I think it's probably the right thing to do if there's space for two hundred and ninety-seven students, which is a whole nother question. But I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're not in a situation where we've actually told a lot of those new developments that are coming online, hey, Central is going to be your school. And then there's either some conflict, you know, when we change our minds or that, you know, a lot of those students do end up showing up at Central and then we end up with a capacity issue at Central as well.
We haven't, we haven't changed our mind. I mean, we haven't, I haven't done anything on redrawing any lines. Basically, any new development that has come in into the sectors that are currently designated, those are the designated, either in their, in the planning process of those developments that we get asked. Those are the designated locations that we've given. So I haven't, we haven't redrawn where anyone should go. McGibben has been very knowledgeable of our demarcation map. And so any of the property developments that has been, that he has access to, he's fully used.
Okay.
And so, again, and I think what you're referring to is even some more recent one. He, he knows that that was designated Chamberlain. And I, I was remiss in not letting you guys, well, well ahead of time, know that that's within the Chamberlain corridor.
Okay.
You know, for instance, but I, I, I don't want to...
I think you're answering my question then, which is that he basically took our old maps and said, I'm assuming that the old maps still hold. And that's what I'm going to plug in. Okay, yeah.
But I, I don't, I don't, I mean, I think that is a big component, though, of our, of our future is that if we see these one significant more than the other, at what point in time may we make an adjustment? And again, this flies into, into our master plan and visioning conversation, you know, I think as well. But anyway, I think, you know, really good questions and it, I, I don't, I don't want to try to, you know, necessarily, you know, speak too much about what I know about demographic collection. But I know, I do know that these are some of the things that I've learned over, over time with, with this particular individual.
Yeah. Sorry, John, to interrupt your flow, but it just, it was just something that was bugging me.
Bears looking into. So, so that's the, the resident enrollment projections. It's, it's more than you need to do the FY nineteen budget, but you certainly want to keep your eye on it for the master planning and visioning work, the out years. The next piece I have here is, is the tuition income estimate. And I've, I've done it this way, this, I did it this way last year. And I'll just kind of walk you through this a little bit. We don't know how many kids are going to be here for next year. So what I've done is I've taken the, the current year's enrollments by grade. And we talked to Deb Beretta earlier and what she thought might be coming in terms of new students. And, and her suggestion was that we're going to have thirty-five incoming ninth graders next year. So that instead of this class of forty-five up here, that class is going to be thirty-six, thirty-five, excuse me. And we're losing this group of twelfth graders that totals to thirty-six. So we're having, she expects a net loss of one. And, you know, it could be four, five, either way, who knows? But we, we're assuming a net loss of one from the one eighty-three. That brings us down to a hundred and eighty-two tuition students at the high school. And at the middle school, we're expecting a total of eight tuition students. So the, the, the estimate for total tuition students next year is a hundred and ninety between the two schools. Here, here I'm using the same allowable tuition that we have in the current year, fifteen thousand seven forty-eight. It will probably be a little bit higher than that, but we don't have that number until sometime in the end of January, which may not be in time for this budget. I think it's fine if it's conservative. So I'm looking at two million eight forty-three for tuition income for next year for regular ed. And that is after a five percent reduction for what I call vacancy loss. So that, that number is about a couple hundred thousand dollars more than the current year. So that's, that's good news. So in the continuing services budget, what we tried to do is, as, as you've heard, push forward all the current staff, all the current programs, all the current expenses that we have in the current year. And that, that, that is good up to a point. If, if the, the demand, say, is, is different next year, then the, the push forward budget can either overstate or understate what we really need. But it's a good exercise to get a, a baseline data from which we can either go up or down. So that this one, the, the biggest question mark we had in terms of a, a push forward budget is how do we treat the stewardship plan items? Those, you know, last year's stewardship items, we're not going to do them again. You know, we did them, they're all over and done with, so what do we do? So that's the, the kind of big question mark here. But the regular operating expenses, the staff. Fortunately, we have two settled contracts, settled contracts with the teachers and the support staffs. We applied new, the new salary rates against the existing staff. We, we don't have an agreement with our administrators yet, but that's a relatively small group. So, so this can be a valuable exercise here.
So as we, as we go to the next slide, I want to just bring your attention to the stewardship component. Every year in this district, we've always had a stewardship allocated resource. We've generally always worked on trying to keep our facilities up to speed. What we've done before this stage, though, is we've kind of made some selective scheduling. We've either pushed some things out, we've made some deductive reasoning based on conditions. And I don't, we, we're now probably thirteen, twelve years into having a stewardship plan. And I feel like it's important that both the board and the community get to see what we've identified on that, on that list. To do anything different starts to, you know, erode kind of the importance of the issues in which we've identified. So that said, we, we've never had this amount in our operating budget. We've never, we've never been able to ever do that. I don't really feel like that's where we're going to go. But I do think it's important that we appropriately identify and share with our community the work that we've done and the, and the stewardship plan that we have and what, what it results in. So we're going to talk a little bit more about that. You'll see it both in the continuing service and then you'll see it applied in a different way in the level funded projections.
So can I clarify this, this number that you're talking about, this close to four point two million? Does this include projects that we didn't do last year?
Yes.
So this is...
There's been push forward.
There's a carry forward from last year because of the budget issues. And then the balance is what was in a twenty-year plan regularly scheduled. Do we have a breakdown of those two numbers?
I don't have that tonight.
We, we certainly can, so both showing what we did not, we deferred last year and what we have scheduled for this year, the breakdown of, of those.
And, and just by way of example, what did we spend in this year's budget and stewardship projects?
Yeah, we can certainly have that.
Yeah, I don't, I, I wouldn't try to guess that off the top of my head.
Yeah, my other concern about that number was that, you know, in going through more of the detail that we'll get into in a minute, is that a decent amount of that was at the middle school and the high school level, which are the two big question marks right now because we're in the process and master planning and visioning of looking at what the needs are at those two buildings. And those are some pretty significant expenses, some of them. And it'd be good later on to sort of talk about which of them are, you know, absolutely critical and which of them frankly should be pushed off until we have better clarity because we don't want to be spending a lot of money on another project if, if it's going to be completely remodeled or, you know, a building will be, you know, completely changed. So I just want to be careful about that. I was surprised that that number was so high in a continuing services budget. I would have thought that that number, I wasn't, I wasn't surprised at that number if we were talking about the, the proposed budget. But I was kind of surprised that that number was in a continuing services because I would have thought that a continuing services would have meant basically this is just baseline maintenance that we just can't avoid. And some of these projects that are in here are, are a little gray area because a lot of it has to do with roofs and that kind of thing. And the question is whether we could get another year or two out of them while we finish the master planning and visiting process for those two buildings, but anyway.
It's really, it's, this is, that's a really fair observation and, and question back to me. And I have to say, you know, I struggled with how best to do this. Certainly understood kind of the directional focus of just moving staff forward, nothing else. But one, the reason again, that I feel like this, these are identified planned needs that have been part of our plan going forward for many, many years. And so I think it's important to highlight them. I absolutely agree, Bridget, that for things that we have up in the air at the high school, middle school, it's going to make no sense for us to do them in this budget year. And those will likely, you'll see those out in the, in our, in our recommended budget that will come, come the next time. But I feel like we, we do need to talk about it and they are part of like our move forward budget because they have been identified and scheduled in that way. So anyway, that's where we are with, with the stewardship. We'll talk more about it in more detail as we move forward. But again, we want to highlight just some of the big pieces. If we move on to page eleven, and again, I know it's hard for folks to see if they're not following, but hopefully everybody has a, a handout and can go on. We're just going to highlight some of the, the big buckets here around, around, you know, the, each, each of the category and what we're seeing. And again, leave time for the board in the future or, or now, if you wish, to ask them specific questions. The, the one thing that this is doing is looking at kind of our adopted budget, the actual expense in seventeen, and then looking at what was adopted in eighteen and then year-to-date, kind of getting some, a run rate, if you will, around that. And then as we look at encumbrances and estimates, and then looking at where we're going to project year-end. To help us, again, we're, we're still, we're into the year, but we're not, I mean, we still have a lot of, a lot of time left. And that then is helps us to arrive at that proposed, those two end columns. So anyway.
I, I just want to emphasize a little bit of this. The, the salaries and benefits amounts, we actually take, you know, group by group and individual by individual, everyone who's currently here today and apply their, their benefit expense. It implies whatever, you know, insurance rates might be going up or, or, you know, salary rates might be going up. And we, we build those numbers up to a grand total and they're broken down here by different categories. For example, the first line is, is teacher salaries. And, and I, you know, the current year, it looks like we're going to have nineteen thousand, nineteen million, four hundred thousand dollars in, in teacher's salaries expended. And our forecast for next year, and I realize we're having the same, the same basic staff and programs here at this continuing service budget with a, with a total new money increase that was about two and a half percent for two thousand nineteen. And we ended up with, with about two point nine four percent for this group. And I think the point four percent adder is due to reclassifications or track advancements or whatever. But it, it tells me that this number is, is, is fairly realistic and this number is also fairly, fairly realistic.
John, I have a question on that. I mean, what, what got negotiated? If this is current services, what got negotiated for year one was what was imposed, which was two point one seven percent. And, and everyone was held on step. So I don't understand why, in fact, it should be less than that with retirements.
You're talking about this number here?
That two point nine four that you have, yeah.
Oh, that, while you're...
That two point nine four percent, so the twenty point zero should be in the nineteenth, is what we're saying.
Right.
Right, but what we did here in the continuing services, I believe you've simply moved people forward. We're going to see in the, in the, in the recommended budget where we capitalize on retirements, we capitalize on other, when our recommended budget is going to be something different. You took the same group you have today and you moved them forward, is what we've done.
But you have a contract, so how, how...
I, I think that this number here is almost exactly what we expected for two thousand eighteen in the imposed contract. And the next year, it shows a two point nine percent increase. And this, and the nineteen over the eighteen, and the total of money was two and a half here. So I, I think this is pretty...
So your, your point, Elizabeth, why is it, you, you think that's high?
Well, actually, I realize now we're looking at year two of the treaty contract.
The yellow column is year two.
But it's still higher than what was negotiated. But that may be the...
I think that's track advancements and that sort of thing.
But, but, do you mean step advancements?
Excuse me?
You mean like step advancements? I'm confused.
No, no, track advancements. We would have accommodated step advancements.
I'm just familiar with the terminology of track advancements. You mean column movements?
Column advancements.
Is that from, you know, when a, when a teacher attains a higher level of education? I see.
Some of that is just...
Steps were included in year two.
Right.
Correct.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If, if he's saying that track advancements, he's saying track advancements means column advancements. So if this just had step in it, it should still be at two point five because the two point five was new money. But he's saying that column advancements were included in the two point five, which...
We could look into why that would be a half percent.
We'll drill on that.
But what you're also saying is you don't have retirements and so forth in here.
Right.
Right, we'd simply move people... Right, we'd simply move people in the, in the mindset of continued service, take your people that you have today and move them. And that does not take into account...
Yeah, so technically I would have expected that number to be 2.49, so that's...
We can do some work on that number for you. But the same kind of analysis works through the rest of these numbers. The total salary increase here at 2.74 percent for that group. We've gone through the same, same exercise with health insurance and all the benefits. The health insurance, we expect to go down by 8.33 percent because of the way we're now doing health insurance. The total benefits group is down three and a half percent, 3.58.
Can I ask real quick where Act eighty-five recapture is captured?
Yeah.
That is on the revenue side of the budget, which is where I believe it belongs. The state is making it so we don't receive as much state ed fund money as we would otherwise have received. We have received no guidance from the state as to how to account for that at all, even though we have asked repeatedly. So what's happening this year is a reduction in our revenue. And so what I'm doing for next year, until someone tells me otherwise, I think it's the most logical thing to do is to reduce that state ed fund revenue correspondingly.
Again, we aren't sure. It may be something that they tell us that we have to, you know, reduce it from our expenditure line.
But we don't know that. The way they're doing it this year would not imply that. So this goes on.
I think you can, you can hit these fairly quickly, John.
Yeah, I'm just going to, professional services up 1.98 percent. The purchased property services up 65.03 percent. We've got about $400,000 in these sets of accounts for stewardship items. Most of it, most of that $400,000 is in plant repair services. So there's some, there's some sizable stewardship in that account. That accounts for much of this increase here. The other purchase services account, up 5.03 percent. Supplies and materials down of 1.57 percent. And that's, that's about where we'll go on that one. The total general fund bottom line here in the continuing services budget stands here at 1.19 percent increase. Going from 47.8 million to 48.3 million. The, the next section is the general, the special revenue funds. Those are, those are funds, those are monies that are expended exclusively from various kinds of state and federal grants. We are supposed to budget those. The revenue is supposed to equal the expense at the end of the day on that. That, that is up at this point 1.43 percent in the continuing services budget.
There are a few line items in there that seem to have just enormous increases or decreases. And I was wondering if things were maybe just miscategorized on this page in a couple of places. So for example, purchase services is down, you know, 98 percent. But then travel and conferences at 503,000 dollars just seems like they're just, it just feels like there's some mis...
Yeah, we have some corrections to do in there around.
...of things in this one. Yeah, so it might be irrelevant because this is continuing services and it's just sort of a baseline thing for us to look at. But as long as it gets corrected in the proposed budget.
We've already made note on some of these, yeah. Thank you, Bridget.
And it's even more difficult because generally this, the grantor agencies will greatly control what we spend these money on. We can budget it in one spot and the grant will get awarded in a different spot. So, you know, out goes our estimate.
Wait, I do, I do, the travel and conference combined fund that is skew, yeah.
Yeah.
So here we have the budget worksheet for the continuing services budget. And as I said, there's about $400,000 of stewardship expenses built into those previous line items that you just looked at. There's another 3.795 million that really didn't lend themselves to that kind of treatment. So I put those numbers in, in this sheet here as a, as an add for stewardship, 3,795, to get to 53,768,434, including all of the stewardship items that we think have been warranted. And we can certainly talk a lot more about that subject. But if we walk down through this, the, the 53,768, we subtract 11.8 million dollars worth of expected revenue. And what I've done with this sheet again is, is where I've made estimates. I've circled them in red so you know where we have real numbers and where we are making estimates. And I, having told you that, the third one down, I messed up on and I left the red, red circle there and I shouldn't have. But we've got 11.8 million dollars in revenue. So we've got 41.8 million dollars in net state education fund. And I'm dividing that by 24,1689, the same equalized pupils as we had from this past year. I expect that's going to go up slightly, but I don't know what that number is yet. To get to net ed spending of 17,330. And I'm dividing it by 9852, which is the new yield that the state has given us to get at this point on this budget that is admittedly, I would say admittedly high with the, all the stewardship funding, to a dollar eight four five for a local residential tax rate, which is 16.82 percent. And in this version, I did not yet have the dollar six two nine for non-residential tax, so it was not in there. But that's the, the budget workshop sheet for the continuing services budget. And I think, I think the value is it gives us a baseline from, to go up or down from.
Well, we certainly know, I mean, I think, you know, continuing service, you know, people may say the 1.43 on the top on the, you know, is just the move forward is, you know, understandable, you know, given the exercise that the continuing service budget does. Certainly the effect of maintaining our facilities based on the schedule and the effect that that has obviously is a pretty significant number, no question. We've never, we've never done this, we've never done that. And I, I don't see how any way we could possibly ever do anything like this in this manner and carrying it in our general, our general fund. We never could do that. Never would it be for a sixteen. But again, as John said, the factors that are currently in play, we're waiting on, we're going to continue to wait on the common level appraisal. We're going to wait on the equalized pupil. And we certainly know that the yield now, as John said, that doesn't need to be there anymore. That will have likely, hopefully positive effect, but it's not going to have significant effect to make that tax rate significantly less.
You know, on this one, I feel, I feel like a better representation of a continuing services budget would have been to use a stewardship that was kind of at the, at a three-year average or something to that effect. Because you've got, you've got a catch-up, then you've got a particularly heavy stewardship year with, with, at schools that we know are in play because of master planning and visioning. So I wonder if we should just redo this one or if it makes sense to look at it with more of a, kind of a running average. I wouldn't use last year necessarily, but it'd be good to know it because we know we had to reduce that to get the budget passed. But if we look at what's normally embedded in an operating plan, that might make more sense.
Yep, I think, again, this is, this is, this is the right place to have this conversation. I mean, if I had put zero there, you would have said, that's not right. I mean, I would hope, because we know we have expenses. If, so I think that's a good idea. We typically have been doing what I have referred to as rescheduling. Actually, for some of you that have been on the board for a long time, we've rescheduled our stewardship plan for just about every single year. Obviously, when we first started, everything was compressed. And we're in a much better place, but I think that would be maybe a fairer representation, maybe even a five-year average or something. Because we've had some harder, kind of, in the last three years, we've had some pretty significant difficulties. So we could certainly do that and kind of give a revised continuing service with, with that kind of average five or three-year run rate on the stewardship expense. Does that make sense to folks? Just to kind of recalibrate, if you will? And I think as we move forward in this format in future years, that probably would be the, kind of the norm.
The truth is, I, I'm sorry, Alex, you had your...
Sure, we, we vote on our budget that we put before the boaters on the second, is it the second meeting in January?
You mean, oh...
We can do it either on the second or the third, depending how you prefer.
Okay, before February first is...
You have to do it before February first.
Okay, so I think coming up with another version of the continuing services budget might, you know, we might, we might be starting to run out of time because I think we need to start looking, you know, realistically about how we're going to get a passable budget. And I think, you know, maybe having continuing services in there with the, you know, a more historically trend-wise stewardship amount might be something good to look at, but I don't know if we should spend that much time about, in it, with it because we may have to be talking about making further reductions.
I hear what you're saying, Alex. It's not, again, it's not extremely hard just to get our, kind of our, our five-year or three-year run rate on averaging that and looking at what that then does to the whole effect. I think, I think, you know, what we're trying to get at is some more, we've never plugged all of that in in any one year. So I think to Elizabeth's point, there may be more realistic representation. Again, I didn't want to, I thought long and hard about this. And I know some of you probably maybe say, it wasn't a good idea. But I think as we continue to move forward, this is identified in the stewardship and I didn't want someone saying, well, why aren't you doing the things that are identified in that particular plan?
Yeah. I mean, I don't have a problem with it being the 3.795 for that reason because it is what we should be doing, is what I understand. Although it is a little bit different this year in the fact that what we should be doing is delaying some of those high school, middle school things because of what our master planning and visioning is. So, I mean, if this, the 3.795 could be a little more realistic to me if you looked harder at those high school and middle school ones and took out the ones that we should delay until we have the feedback from Doran and Woody.
So my, my way of thinking about this is that the continuing service is simply moving things forward and identifying those that are scheduled. I don't, I think all of us are pretty concrete that this is not where we're going to end up. The story that's going to now unfold is going to be through master planning and visioning, through the work that we have identified in stewardship. Those are going to be either go or no goes based on a certain rationale and reason, recommended programming. So we're going to, you're going to see a lot of changes from the continued service budget with validation, to your point. So this is, this is kind of like a, my way of thinking is this, it's kind of a stake in the ground. This is where, if we were just to move things forward and we're going to, we're going to be doing our, our next phased budgets, kind of off of this kind of benchmark, if you will, or not benchmark, but known, known kind of current system function.
Steve?
Previously, you have pointed out that the state statute requires that you track your budget surplus from two years ago and have to spend that to zero. Is that what's on page? Is that what's broken out is the special revenue fund?
No.
No, okay.
That's not shown. That would show up on the revenue sheet, which is not in this presentation. We'll be sure to bring that next time. It's about, it's the mid $500,000, 575, I think, is the number I'm carrying right now. And that's the, the fund balance from FY17 is supposed to offset the FY19 school district budget.
Yeah, and so will that reduce on page 16? You know, you basically show what you have to raise through taxes. Will the, I don't know, you actually have the handout here, the 4.1 percent residential tax rate. Is that inclusive of the 575?
Yeah, the 575,000 dollars would be in this, this number here, 11,882, it's included in that number.
It's already included, okay, so we can't look?
Along with tuition income and the various state grants that are, you know, available and so forth.
All right. I guess a second question, you know, looking at the, on page 15, just the projected FY18 at year-end is actually coming in quite nicely below the approved budget. About one point, about one and three quarters million. If you were to roll forward, maybe I should ask a question differently. Does your initial cut at the budget for 19 start from 18 projected expenditures or does it start from 18 approved budget?
Yeah, I'll say it again. We don't take like the, generally, we don't take the, the 18 expenditures and increment them by a percentage to get to 19. For example, I'll just say the health insurance, where I know that intimately. We know how many people we have on each plan. We know how much the plans are going to cost. We make assumptions about how much in going forward, how much we're going to have in claims experience that we're going to be responsible for. We actually figure that out for FY19. We don't simply take the FY18.
Zero-based budgeted.
Right.
I consider this to be in many ways a zero-based budget, I really do. And every municipal budget I've ever worked on, I felt the same way about because we actually figure out all those numbers and add them all up and they come down to a number. There's, there's some that we take and add 2 percent, but they're very rare.
Definitely, definitely of how we arrive at the FY19 proposed and what you highlight, Steve, is, you know, at the 40, 499 with a, with a finishing projected at 47, 47,499, right? That's, those are the figures you're kind of looking at and saying, could you adjust downward your projected budget? Are you going to take that into account? What I'm hearing is...
No, you're saying your projected budget is coming in substantially better than the adopted budget. And does that have any bearing on what the proposed budget? I think, you know, John's saying that's already been taken into account. I guess what then I then observed, though, is that if you are looking at the 49.9, let's just call it 50, relative to the 47.5, that's about two and a half million. It's almost a 5 percent year-over-year increase. Notwithstanding that it was built from zero, I'm just saying that what you're looking at is a two and a half million increase on a 47 and a half million spend. So that's pretty big.
Yep, no question. Yeah, and again, this is, the focus of this budget is the continued service. And plugging in that, that proposed has assumptions in there that we know aren't going to hold true, right? Because we know we're going to take into account retirements. We know we're going to take into account, you know, other, other components. So where, we could poke at those assumptions a lot, I think. But that, we know that's not where we're going to end up. I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's just the comment. I don't know if I'm inferring that 49.9 is what you think a good first pass at what the actual need is going to be.
Well, not really because we know that there's going to be staff changes. But the continued service budget is, say, this group of people, if they were, we were to move them all to next year, this is what it would be. And so there are, we haven't made a lot of additional assumptions other than the cohort of that current group. We know that cohort's going to change and we typically have, you know, some things that we do to those cohorts year-over-year based on, again, retirements and a variety of adjustments that happen, which is what we'll be doing next.
David, just a quick question because I was starting to go where Alex was going really, which is, you know, I sort of feel like the continuing services budget is, has sort of served its purpose. I mean, it's sort of, even, we can, you know, on the back of the envelope, adjust it here and adjust it there. And I did my own little back-of-the-envelope, you know, adjustments as I was reviewing it. I do have a question, though, along Steve's lines, which is why are we so far under budget, so far? And does that have to do with hiring staff later than we intended? Because we had the rifts and we were sort of slow to some, in some places, fill. Is that just because we have the staffing profile that we're carrying forward into next year, but we didn't have that staffing profile necessarily at the beginning of this school year? It sort of started a couple of months in for some people. It sort of started a couple of months in, for some people. Is that the main reason that we're that far below budget on expenses? And I can see why we would maybe be over on revenue, but in terms of expenses, I'm, I'm surprised that we're that far under revenue in terms of projections. I don't want to get into sort of the details, but do you have a sense of?
I, I don't, I don't want to with, with 100% certainty say that's, that's all of it, but you, many of you know that we, we were well into two and three months before we hired, we were able to hire staff.
Right.
For some positions, and we were, what I would say, limping along.
Right.
Those positions were unfilled and were prorated, right?
Right.
And so, I think definitely that has, that's a big component, right? Our salaries and benefits are the biggest component. So, when somebody didn't come in until, you know, the second week of October, and we can look back at our hire dates, those, those salaries are all prorated, and many of them obviously came out well underneath that, the, the budgeted amount. So, definitely that has, that has an impact. I would be remiss to say that that had that whole impact, though, so I want to be, I want to be careful not to say that accounts for everything.
I, I would just direct your attention to the health insurance account. The health insurance account for the current year.
Page 11.
Page 11, the first line in the, the second block there, we budgeted $5.8 million, and I, I looked at this number, and I came up with $4.7 million for maybe the year-end. And that's a $1.1 million savings in that one account, which it seems, it seems too big, but that's where a lot of that, that savings came from. And then we had to, and we're going to, we're going, we're taking that, I think this includes a 10% increase in the rates going to 2019, and we've got, you know, we're absorbing, this is based on a 75% claims utilization for the full year next year. So, there's a, there's a $600,000 increase in that account going to FY19. So, there's, there's a source of some real volatility, and it doesn't surprise me that that's happening in that account, but it does surprise me the size of it. But there, there are other places I think I could identify, but that is the biggest single piece there.
I do think, yeah, for the, for next meeting, there ought to be a drill down on that forecasted finish.
On, on the healthcare?
Yeah.
No, on the full number.
On the?
The 1.7 million change.
1.7 million, on the?
The, the difference between the?
Oh, yes, the 40, okay, gotcha, yep.
Martin just made this clarification for me, so when you pay premiums to VHI, those are just premiums, in other words, if you were forecasting on the, the health insurance premiums to them, that's money out the door. The district is not discreetly self-insured, so you might set aside funds, but if you don't actually have claims that are, you know, if you have much better-than-expected actual claims experience, that's not what would account for that savings, because you pay VHI.
We, we've never paid for claims before this second half of this year, so we have no, no track record.
Right.
Okay.
And we will have, we will have the HRA in place for 18 months over this.
Okay, I guess, specific question, we budgeted 5.8, we're at 4.7. The 1.1 is not, a, a reason that is not 1.1, the 1.1 is that we've had better claims experience.
No, that's not the reason.
It's something else, okay.
No, but, and, and what John is saying, he's estimated utilization on the HRA at about 75%, and that, the, the statewide utilization is closer to 65, but the demographic would suggest it may go up as well, so.
So, that's, that's, that's kind of how that sheet works, I don't want to over the point, but.
So, in the, in the, in the sense of time, I'd like to move through the stewardship plan, which is identified in '17, '18, '19, it goes on through '20, '21, actually. Unless there's something specific that's called out here, this is, again, the scheduled piece, scheduled, the O in the highlighted yellow is for operating, the lease is in there, and you're not seeing anything that's identified in there as bonding. Again, what, what I did here from the earlier is that we should be clear in the articulation going forward around what were the things that are carried forward from the previous, or we didn't complete last year that is articulated in, in this, and so we'll make sure that happens. But let, let me just pause, I, I don't, I don't necessarily want to go fast through this, but let me just pause, if you have any particular question on the stewardship, on this continuing service budget, knowing that it's likely going to change pretty significantly as we move forward.
I mean, I just go back to, hate to reiterate, but just looking closely at what we need to take out of here on the high school and middle school.
That's right, you're absolutely right.
And, and I'll, I'll just bring it up again, I mentioned this to you before, as far as the, the pavement, the parking lot upgrade, and some of those things that, I only raise it because I just learned that by the end of this month, we're supposed to have the three-acre permit for impervious surfaces, where we would have to retrofit. Unfortunately, that rules has been delayed, but by the, at some point.
It's going to kick, yeah.
It's going to kick, and, and I'm pretty sure we have more than three acres of, of impervious surfaces, because you would count the roofs and, and the parking lot. So, there may be some additional funds, that's just a reason why you may either want to push back on that, or at least really talk to Tom Di Pietro to make sure that we're not.
You did bring that up before, Martin.
I just want to flag that again.
Appreciate it. Any, anything else on that? We'll, we'll move on to the level funding. So, the level funding, again, I'm probably going to get, you, you can give me some feedback on expectations, but the level funding attempts, attempts to limit expenditures, no more than what the, the school district budget was for the current year. We show that in the budget workshop. Again, this is where we start to pick up, again, based on my kind of level fund, I then pick up those, those items in the bonding, again, to be sensitive to getting a level-funded budget. And, again, that's kind of the mindset on the level funded. This is laid out a little bit different, it starts then on pages 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27, on the stewardship identified pieces, highlighting out where it would be either, again, operational with an O, V for bonding. Again, same things are in play as, as you mentioned earlier, Martin, but, again, they're identified there. And then on page, the revised, page 28, actually, isn't it? I think they're actually all in your book correctly, we did revise this page. This was also in communication with, with Bridget, I think, and an assumption that was made before we, we actually level funded, we put a proration in what we thought was the equalized, and this revision, only change in the revision was that number, okay? So, this budget workshop, John, why don't you go ahead and, and walk people through this one?
So, what, what I did here, and I, I have to say that this is, this is very confusing, and if you don't catch it, catch it the first time, don't be surprised, but I never tried to do this exercise before, and I, I'm really not sure how well I succeeded. But what I did here was I took the, the continuing services budget as the starting point, and then subtracted a great percentage of the facilities stewardship plan amounts, and presumed that those would get funded by a bond issue, instead of simply out of the operating budget. And there was some adjustments to be made in that process that confused the issue a little bit. And then I said, if, having, having bonded now for most of those, nearly all the facility stewardship stuff, we still had 573,922 to cut, if you will, in order to get to a level-funded budget. So, that 573,922 is a fill number to get to the level-funded budget of $49,268,82 in both years. And again, we subtracted the revenues that we expect, in this case, I did add the revenue, and I, I'm not sure I should have done it, but I did add the revenue that we would expect to get from Winuski School District for the bus transportation project that we're going to do with them. So, that's the only change in this level-funded draft in terms of revenues. And we left the equalized pupils constant in, in this revised version of page 28, and came down to an ed, net ed spending per equalized pupil of $15,443.39. And we divide again by the property yield number, which we've been given, and here's, here's the consequence of the increase, because, the decrease, because the yield is going down by 3.13%, and the tax rate goes up by, in this case, 3.51%, which is the 3.13 drop in the yield, its impact on the tax rate, plus a $42 increase in the net ed spending per equalized pupil. So, this, at a level-funded budget, in this crude, I'll, I'll say crude fashion of trying to arrive at it, shows that the, the tax rate associated with that would be a 4.10% increase, even though the budget is level-funded and equalized pupils are constant, and the ed spending per equalized pupil is only going up by $42.27, or 0.27%, we still have a 4.10% increase in the tax rate. So, we've got some work to do to get to a real level-funded budget with a, with a tax rate that people can, you know, raise their hands to, I think. And we'd like to see it in the, in the low threes, I mean, I think. So, we've got to cut, in addition to the 573, which we have not identified yet, we have, we have spoken about a few things to get us, you know, partway to that 573, but I think we have to go a little bit further than that, too.
So, let me just ask, I mean, I mean, in my mind, level-funded budget doesn't mean that we're having a level tax rate.
No, no, no.
So, I mean, yeah, if, it, it would be to have a 0% increase.
Right, that's what this number is here.
Well, I, I determine level fund is that it's from what we spent last year.
Yeah.
We spend the same in the, in the proposed next year. Level fund. Now, that's, that's what we can control. I, I can't control or make estimates on what the state is or is not going to do. I get that from the property owner, it's, how can we create a level, a level-funded platform? But again, what this exercise did is, for us, in level funding, at least under our work, was to, to get it at the same amount that we, that we are currently been approved to spend this year.
Okay, yeah, and that's, I think, careful, it's, it's not how much we spent last year, it's how much we budgeted.
That's correct.
Last year.
That's correct.
If we spend only how much we spend, it'll actually be quite a bit lower.
That's right.
Yeah.
And again, the, so.
Which would be very tough to do.
Yeah.
Because that doesn't include.
So, my, my desire really out of, out of this is to set the context with you, that we've got kind of the continued service, same group, and we know that group is going to change, which is our work, that's, now we're, we're in the preparation for the, for our recommended budget. We have kind of what, what it represents as level funded, if we were to level fund, given these parameters, and again, we still, we don't have equalized yet, we don't have CLA, but if that was to be true, then we're at 4.1%. I, I'm, I'm, I, I know pretty much from the guidance that I think, and knowing you all well enough, that's not going to work for this community.
So, what's not going to work?
That, that percent increase on the tax rate is not going to work.
So, I guess, I guess, well, I, I mean, that's not where I, at least I am, and I'm just one of five, is that if we're able to present to the community that we have level, level-funded the budget, and because of things out of our control, it's a 4.1%, I think we can sell that.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I may be the minority on this board, I don't know, but I mean, that's, I, I'd rather go after what the budget is and is our control, and then sell whatever that tax rate ends up, than try to figure out, well, unless, unless it's, we're not going to cut into our programming and harm the education we're offering to the community, heck, yeah, if we can get down to 2% increase in tax rate without harming the product that we're delivering, no, that'd be great, but that just doesn't seem.
So, there's, there's a couple, so, I, and again, I need to listen more than talk, but I think what, what Steve said is that as we move forward, kind of our zero-basing, that rewrites not just what was budgeted, but we anticipate to spend, and then moving forward to sustain programming, and where that might end for us is an important component to arriving at a tax rate that we think might be more sellable. So, I want to do, I also want to point out, we, the, on page 32 was also a revise on the tax rate. So, again, we, we took off the FY19, because I, I think that putting anything there would be, would be.
Premature.
Misguiding. So, this gives you the, the, kind of, the run rate history, is it 10 years? I didn't do the math, it may be nine. But the percent spending increase proposed is 2.86 on the, on those years, and 1.82 on the tax rate change. So, I think everybody knows the volatility is that just because spending goes way up or way down does not necessarily equal the tax rate. But my thinking is, based on the budget direction, is to continue to try to provide the opportunities that we think are important to our students, while at the same time being cognizant of kind of our, our, our tax implications, while at the same time taking into account the current conditions of our facilities and the work that we're doing related to master planning and visioning. Obviously, a big component of this is the performance of our students. And we've looked at, we're, we're going to, we have suggestions in here where either we need to keep coaches, for instance, in math, and certain places where we need to increase based on some of those, that data that's coming, so we'll, we'll be making some of those recommendations in this recommended budget. But I think at this point, it, it's better for me to just listen to some of the guidance, you know, Martin has started, and helping me then frame, you know, this, this next recommended budget that as we move forward.
So, armed with this data, two, two quick thoughts, I don't know if I should characterize these observations, questions, what have you. So, one, the trivia one is, my other paper article actually has the level-funded budget characterized as a 5.88% tax increase. So, the news is getting better, at least this week.
The yield really helped that one number, it really did.
Yeah, so that's, I, I'd say it's good news, I don't know, I, I see Corey's in the audience, so I think we've already gone to press, so. But it's good, that's, you always under-promise, over-deliver, so that's good. The second thought, just when we're thinking about scenarios, and, because I think we are a little angsty about the, the tax rate increase, the governor has provided in several communications now, an aspiration, if not to level fund, in the case of districts that are stable or growing, to nonetheless try to limit to Vermont average wage growth, I think it's actually the six-year average Vermont average wage growth, which he reckons to be about 2.5%. So, it seems as we're, as we're doing this, we might want to have that as an additional, and this is a question, should we, sort of respecting the administration's guidance, think about having a 2.5% scenario?
You mean more 2.5% growth in the budget?
In the tax rate. Actually, that, and actually, that's a good question.
See, I don't, I don't think, I don't think he was talking about it being a 2.5% growth in tax, well, who knows?
That would be good for clarification, no, that's, that's true.
I, I was puzzled by that, because I thought he was saying that districts that were either not going down or increasing would be allowed 2.5% growth in the budget.
That's what, that was my impression.
I was like, where, am I reading this, or is this like the yellow brick road?
Well, here it is, it's in, it's in your, it's in your.
In our package, all right.
Yeah, it's the, the very last paragraph I have right here, Elizabeth. It's the, it says, "In aggregate, if all districts can arrive at the per pupil spending growth rate that is no higher than the economic and wage growth, roughly 2.5%, Steve, you're right."
2.7%.
But, but it's per pupil spending.
Per pupil spending.
Per pupil spending is what then winds in, that's right.
Well, our per pupil spending on the level-funded here is a lot lower than that.
Yeah, so actually, that would increase our residential tax rate quite a bit. I withdraw my comment.
Was that the trivia one, or the more material one?
Well, now it is, now it is, I mean, because then it becomes just a purely optical exercise to have a 2.5% tax rate.
And where our per pupil is at?
Under the level-funded, it's on page.
0.27?
0.27, yes.
So, I'm sorry, just another comment on this, and this, I, I don't want the, the educational product that we're offering to suffer because of the mistakes they've been making in Montpelier. I mean, as, as far as the $31 million that is going towards these mergers, that they are surprised that that's how much money we're putting into it, and, and the other things are going, they're using the one-time money to have a false 2-cent decrease in the tax rate last year. I don't want us to take this on as, you know, and punish what we're, what we're trying to accomplish here. to accomplish here. So, I mean, I, I think if we can get to a level funded budget, I mean, that's great. I, I'm not tied to having to get to that if it's going to mess up what we're offering as a product.
Well, remember, too, even in level funding, it hasn't addressed issues of retirement, for instance. I mean, it's the same, you know, basic salary number, that, but beyond that, and we, and we don't have experience yet with.
No, don't.
The claims history. I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I also think when you talk about continuing services with the community, I think we have to be prepared to kind of say, why is continuing services the right thing for South Burlington? And we've, we've had challenges, you know, coming back, and I think even amongst the board around balancing potentially new investments against retiring, you know, older investments that may have been ongoing, that maybe don't have the same bang for the buck, as it were. So I, I think we have to be careful on continuing services, that it isn't exclusively a preservation of the status quo, as it relates to programming. Other questions or comments from the board?
I just think this is a great, kind of, second or third cut, I, I feel pretty well armed going forward.
I mean, I think the, this, the conversation, you know, amongst what we're hearing now is, is helpful. Again, I had the bus, budget message and direction, it will further get refined to speak specifically to student opportunities, responding to the student identified needs based on our data and our achievement of our, towards our ends, sustaining those facility needs based on also the work that we're trying to do around planning for the future and master planning. So, that said, this is helpful direction. Tomorrow, I meet with, with two other building administrators. Tomorrow, we'll conclude our, our first round. Tomorrow morning at seven thirty, we have an administrative meeting. We'll be going over some of the same things that you're seeing tonight, and they'll be getting, they'll be informed that as early as Friday, and likely Monday or Tuesday, they'll be getting some directives on where they need to be making some decisions and giving us some, some, some data that supports their budgets, so.
So can I just add one real quick? I mean, as far as, I know this is, we haven't seen anything about FTEs and such yet, but just the, I, I do want to say that I don't want to see increased FTEs, and if there's any way we can see it decrease, I think just for perception wise and what we're trying to do, it would be very tough for us to increase FTEs.
Yep, I think it's safe to say that, I've, I've heard that before.
I, I, I knew that you had, but I just.
It's always good to say it again.
It's always good.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from the public? All right, we ready to move on?
Yeah.
We'll move on to agenda item eight, master planning and visioning.
So by your place, I think in your handouts, there's a packet of master planning and visioning, yes?
Yes.
I don't know how comfortable necessarily Steve and, and Bridget are to also kind of weigh in on this, but what, what we've done here is kind of pull some of the information together on kind of where we are today. So I would say to Steve and Bridget, and even Martin, in some cases, weigh in on where you may want to add some additional details to where we're at. The one pager, I think, kind of pulls it together. Item number one, this first draft elementary threshold analysis, is, is again, a first attempt at looking at how we can prepare and look forward based on some certain criteria, whether it's enrollment, other baseline measurement data to make some decisions around kind of where, where we need to go. Number, and we're going to look at that in just a second. Number two is the enrollment forecast, it's the exact same forecast that you saw in your budget packet, but again, that's an important component around looking at our future, and just as we indicated where certain new neighborhoods will be going, or where we have space, or where we don't, those are important considerations. There's been, we just kind of pulled a pretty quick chart together to, to give some indications of, of enrollment projections from that work. Item three is the contract with ATC and the noise, noise testing, again, this came up at the, the technical, technical advisory committee meeting last night, but we are going to be doing, noise testing at Chamberlain. It is going to happen in the month of December. It's done in a very, very structured way, and again, we'll hope to inform kind of our baseline data that we can then compare against some of the, the information that we have to date, from the, the EIS study that was done. And lastly, is the, the, the sound insulation. Again, we have pushed forward and made a request to, to Burlington and the FAA that we, we'd like to get going as soon as possible on sound insulation for this particular school that we're in, Chamberlain. And the, the big reason here, I think, which is important, we are, we are spending money to do the testing, we do want to make sure that when those, when the jets arrive in September, a jet, first jet arrives, F-35, September of nineteen, that we are appropriately prepared to respond to the needs of our, of our, of our climate here at, at Chamberlain. The, the reason being is that they're not going to be doing the sound study for likely, they won't be doing it until the next few years. And so it's been really important for us to make, make sure we have some baseline data that we can correlate to the data that we have currently, and begin to look at what, what are the implications going to be. We think moving forward with the sound insulation at this present time is an important next step. So that's, that's the quick overview, let me just quickly turn to the, and again, Steve or Bridget or Martin, please feel free to interrupt. This, this analysis of the elementary school threshold criteria, I know that you saw an earlier draft of this, I don't necessarily want to read it, you know, word for word, if there are things that you see that are, you have big questions on, or you have I wonders, I would absolutely very much like some feedback from you. What this does is it takes into account those significant parameters, identifies them into some, some condition codes, and we've tried to be logical around, around either a zero for no concern, one for some concerns are evident, up to concluding to that they are evident, some of the attachments, et cetera. So we begin, we've populated, as again, a draft, looking on a site-by-site basis, from enrollment, staffing allocations, student achievement, and tried to get at that. Currently, then we, we've, we've put, we've put some, you know, final numbers there, we've done some ranking, and again, we're not exactly sure, you know, what arrives at, a need for a decision or not, but we've, we've kind of done, there's concerns in two out of the seven categories, or are we going to do it by a total point? We're not yet there, we're just trying to come up with, you know, an evaluation tool that, that helps us get there.
I just have a quick question, I think incrementally, the last time I remember seeing this as a sort of plus, neutral, minus.
Yeah.
And what, I believe, in using that framework, Chamberlain sort of stood out, and Orchard and Marquette really didn't. This is interesting, because Orchard and Chamberlain both stand out, using this criteria, so.
I, I mean, I think what we, you know, as we, as we look at having a measured outcome, measured decision, the numbers were certainly much more applicable than plus, plus minus, because you, you know, you'd have to have a quantitative number, yeah. So again, this is, this is just exactly what it says, it's a draft, I think it's really important, students included, you know, to be taking a look at it, and what does it mean, and at what point should we be making a decision? If all categories are demonstrating that there are elements of concern in every single category, does that mean you, you do, you've got to do something, or is it three out of the, the seven? Or if it's high, high point in one of the categories? Not, I'm not yet totally assured how, how best to move forward.
Yeah, I'm struggling with it a little bit, too. I have to say, as I, as I read through this, it, it wasn't for me a very clear way of just at a glance, you know, looking at each of the schools, it, it still took a lot of sort of assessment and comparison, especially between the elementary schools in particular, and I, I do feel like there needs to be, yeah, I, I need to do some thinking, and maybe sit with you, or sit with the group, and, and, and talk about it a little bit more, because I, I'm still struggling, because it just, for me, doesn't really kind of get right to the heart of each school. So for example, you know, are enrollments climbing or decreasing over time at Rick Marquette? Well, they're not really doing anything, they're kind of stable, but yet we have a condition code of one, so, you know, I'd have thought that was zero, like that's no concern or no problem. So that was one issue. And then some of these things are more serious than others, you know, in terms of even the buckets, so some things are a higher level of concern if there's a condition that's not a zero in there. So I just, yeah, I'm struggling with what it should look like visually, or what should be included. I think we need to, I, I should have dug in probably earlier on that, but I think we need to, I, I need to give you a little more.
Again, there's been a lot of thought put into this, but there's a lot more that we know that needs to go into it. That one example, like enrollments climbing or decreasing at Rick Marquette?
Yeah.
Part of the reason why it has a condition code of one is that there are some concerns. When you have decreasing enrollment, some people may say, ooh, that's better for the, the school, although where there's an unbalance in, in, in future projections, then that's not necessarily all positive, you know, it's, it's a concern. So that's why it has a mild condition code of one, at least in our initial assumptions. But you're right, calibrating from school to school, calibrating on whether enrollments are going up a little or a lot, what would that do? So this is, this is again, out of the gate, trying to be a tool.
Yeah.
That, that I think will be, you know, informative, it needs to be informative on, on determining our next step.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I think the critical component of this is just making sure we're tracking the critical factors, and, and I couldn't think of what we might be missing, but maybe it just takes a little longer. I mean, it's going to be, to some extent, a little bit more of an art than a science to precisely determine what might need to be done, but it's making clear that these are the factors that we're, we're following, and I think that this does that.
Well, again, I, I appreciate any feedback, this is a really good time, I know some of you are, are, you know, have some, have some thoughts that, you know, we can't necessarily get to tonight, but I would appreciate that. Again, I, I have, John has been working pieces on this, John Stewart's been working on pieces, some of this, so, again, I appreciate the feedback and look for, look forward to more. The last part is, of this is the same thing that you saw, you have it in, in hard copy, it's the enrollment, highlighted in red are the enrollments that, again, we used in making the, some of the, the decisions values on that, ATC and the signed proposal on moving forward with the sound study, just so you have that. Again, this is connected to the master planning work, so.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to policy review, and Martin, can I have you pick up this meet, this part of the meeting for two minutes?
Yes.
All right.
Absolutely. The first policy is the student alcohol and drugs, this is the third reading, are there any?
We did not receive any, any feedback from folks on this. Again, these, these are done model policies that we have that have come back and been vetted through VSBA.
Okay.
I think there was feedback on this one, but then, but then we were told that we really couldn't change it.
That's right.
So you actually ran it by the lawyers, and I had, had some specific recommendations in here, and I was basically told no.
I should be more, I know, Bridget, I didn't, I should be more specific that the, you know, most of these are ones that have come forth, we did, we do have some that obviously have, the ones that are being called for action, we, we may have had some questions on, and Bridget's right, F-six, student alcohol and drugs, we did have some, some things that we did previously work and communicate.
I'll just make one quick comment on this, that the annual report, this has nothing to do with whether we pass this policy, that is mentioned, that, that should, that should be part of the ends monitoring. I don't know if you were already planning on doing that, because that.
Yeah.
That's certainly one of the ends we have for. So if there are any questions, I'd take a motion to approve the policy, student alcohols and drugs, policy F-six.
Second.
Take your choice, Meg.
Ladies first.
I will second.
I will second.
Oh, Bridget and Steve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that one, so let's see how many of these we can get done before this gets passed. All right, were there any questions on the firearms, policy F-eight? Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh, I didn't see your hand, I didn't see, you've got to be quick, man, you've got to be quick, Alex.
Right, so at the bottom of the first page, number two, it talks about expulsions, and it says, the school board may modify the expulsion on a case-by-case basis when it finds the circumstances such as, but not limited to, and number two is, the student did not intend to use the firearm to threaten or endanger others. And I'm, I'm just wondering if we should be putting these considerations in policy, or should we be keeping these considerations each time we have an expulsion hearing? Or rather, should we have these considerations as guidelines? Well, I guess they are guidelines now.
Correct.
But it seems difficult to me whether to consider, you know, to put these factors into, into here before we know the circumstances.
Well, you kind of need to have the, the guidance from the policy in order to, to move forward.
Yeah, it, it is guidance, but it just, I wouldn't want it to be misinterpreted as an out, to either do expel a student or not expel a student, because this is written here.
There, there would be a lot that would need to go into the explanation of.
Oh, yeah.
Of this, and I think it's, it's pretty, pretty clear.
Yeah, I know, I, perhaps I should have come to this on the first reading, but it just, I tried, I tried to visualize a potential expulsion hearing, and then trotting out this policy, and, well, if the student says, you know, I didn't intend to hurt anybody with it.
Well, again, I think where this typically gets into, we have many different parts of Vermont.
Yeah.
That may be, you know, without proper parental or guardian permission, a firearm might come in as a show and tell, and, okay, and, and clarity around, you know, there is an expulsion, but the intent was, it was a show and tell, you know.
For the hunting rifle in the trunk.
That's right, and so I think this, this is a, this is a guideline that, or this is a component of the policy that speaks to that.
I, I don't think that, that students are going to look at this and say, hey, I've got a note, I can bring a gun to school, because I'll just say, I wasn't going to hurt anybody with it. I mean, that student has to be trying to convince a board at an expulsion hearing. The expulsion hearing is non-negotiable, if you bring a gun to school, you're going to go to an expulsion hearing, take your chance. So I think that, that's enough of a deterrent, presumably, if, if students even read this policy, to not, not be, not be bringing a firearm to school. And then, of course, there is common sense, which I think is one of our ends, too, is to have our students have common sense.
Was common sense born or made?
I'll defer to our legislative member, but also the school board may.
It's may, yeah.
The school board shall.
Well, right, no, no, no.
May modify the expulsion, yeah.
Yeah, these are issues that we can.
So I, I just wouldn't want it, it just seems as though these are suggesting that the board be less, unreasonably lenient at an expulsion hearing, especially now that I reread it, number four, well, the expulsion would not serve the best interests of the pupil, but what about every other student? You know, maybe the expulsion would serve them better by being safe.
Yeah, I mean, I think this.
Yeah, well, that's, that's true, but I, I guess I would just say that I like the board to have as much discretion to do it right, and I think this gives the board that discretion. You know, I mean, it's, rather than tying a board's hands and mandating what's going to happen to a student, here are some things to look at.
Yeah.
That'd be my view.
Good way of framing it.
And then, then I sort of go to a, a larger.
Power.
Subject of, should, should policy be considered things such as rules that are strictly enforced, or should they have guidelines such as these? Or, I, I don't even know if I would call these guidelines, I called them suggestions.
Well, Alex, I mean, I mean, I'm not going to say, you know, your points aren't good, I mean, there, there's been a long history of policy development specific to actions and/or consequences that need to be rendered. and/or consequences that need to be rendered. We're at a place, and these are required and mandated, you know, policies. You know, in many cases, I wish we, we didn't have as many as we have, but the reality is there, these are required, and these have been vetted, you know, by various attorneys, not just once, but many times. Again, I'm not saying that, hey, they don't, they don't deserve retweaking or consideration, and the will of the board, I'm certainly happy if, if you have additional questions, I'm certainly happy to get some additional clarifications if need be.
I would just say on the broader question, I mean, there are lots of our policies that have guidance in them. Lots of them. I mean, G six comes to mind off the top of my head around class size. There's sort of, here's ideal, here's, you know, the outer boundary, and even the outer boundary, there's room for interpretation. And I think we have to have that room for interpretation because we're dealing with people. You know, we're not dealing with widgets, you know? And so, there are all kinds of extenuating circumstances that we're going to have to face. I kind of, I like having the things because, you know, I have sat in an expulsion hearing, you know, not a hearing, but a, a meeting to decide whether we're going to expel students if the student wasn't actually there. But, and especially as a new board member, you know, I think that kind of guidance is helpful to think, to think through the process a little bit and think of things that you might not consider. So, I kind of like having the guidelines in there.
Yeah, well, I do intend to support this, this policy, but I just, it just surprised me. Your questions are good ones, and I'm sure there's probably a lot more, you know, information that could, would accompany some of the reasons and why.
Well, I don't, I don't want to send anybody off to do any extra work on this. I think we should just pass it after having made my points. Sorry.
Did we take action on F six?
We did.
We did. I was going to try to get through all of them until we ran into this, so. Just kidding.
I was holding it up.
You gave us five minutes. Yeah, you gave us five minutes. So, we thought we were going to just zoom through them while you were.
So, we were waiting for a motion on this one.
All right, so, do we have a motion to approve policy F eight on firearms?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. I guess what I would suggest, Elizabeth, on these, these other ones, is that board members, again, these are, you're seeing these for the first reading. If you could just read through them, if you have particular questions, push them back to us. I obviously need to, we'll move them all to second reading, and we'll probably need to take some, some, break them out for third reading so they're not all appearing at the same time.
Okay. So, with that, if we could pass on any questions or comments to David on one, two, three, five, and seven, and policy E one. And Martin's done already?
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to setting the agenda for the Tuesday, December 19th meeting. And note that the change, we had a change in the date from Wednesday, the 20th, to Tuesday, the 19th.
That's right.
We need to add the legislative letter. We talked about it earlier.
Yep.
Do we meet before then, City School? I would just check the date. I'd keep it on. If not, I delete that one for now.
Yep, and I think I needed to make a note that, no, not in January, it's in, not in December, it's in January. So, legislative, not breakfast. What's being proposed is a legislative lunch on the eighth of January. I know I'm off task here a little bit, Elizabeth, but that's, that's one, one date that's needed. I don't know how that works. Would, would folks like us to just put out a meeting request? Legislative lunch, we've never done it this way. It would, it's on a Monday, which typically works for legislators, so it would be a lunch. It would be at the city offices, and this may be a place where we would do the legislative priorities and other conversations specific to legislative actions.
Yeah, I would need to pass that on after it's sort of finalized to someone else to present at that meeting because I will not be here.
Be there, okay. So, anyway, that's, that's one announcement, and then the steering committee currently is being proposed on January 18th. So, I know, that's not.
So, why don't we put those out as dates?
Dates, we'll do that. Mm-hmm. Seemed like we had.
As long as we have a couple people from the board to present this in a mobiliar.
I think this, this, this makes sense. I think the bulk of our time, obviously, is devoted to budget.
And we're doing it.
In the past, we have not allocated enough time for that, so.
And just a quick note to our student reps. Obviously, this time of year, we're pretty focused on budget, but really, if you have thoughts in terms of student input, either particularly related to agenda items, but also to interface with a superintendent on areas so we can sort of anticipate where these things might fit in the budget.
To that, to that point, it may be of interest to you to sit with me and maybe some of the other administrators and just know a little bit about what's in some of those student opportunities. And, and as we shape up that recommended budget, you'll be able to maybe give us a little bit more student voice, specific to those opportunities and, and the overall budget. So, maybe, maybe we can, we can set up some time, and you can look through this, but we can work with you on it. Yep, great. So, why don't, why don't we leave it that you can send me an email or through Delana or Meg? Sometimes it would work for you. Again, not, not wanting to get you out of class or anything of that nature, but a time that would work where we could sit and talk about the budget.
I think that'd be a great deal.
All right, anything else for the December 19th meeting? All right, move on to agenda item 11, future agenda items.
Don't we have update on ends monitoring scheduled?
We do.
So, do we need to have that still on?
I think the, the rule is that we keep it on until we.
Yeah, I think that's, we had the discussion. We keep it on until it's done.
Mm-hmm.
Until it actually.
Till it happens.
Well, it should never be done.
Well, no, but it, until it gets embedded in the monitor, we just presented.
Okay.
Okay, move on to considering the minutes of the November 15th meeting.
I had a bunch of comments on this from once, actually. On this first page, it says that we entered executive session at 6:31, but then it says that our discussion regarding labor negotiations with teachers, which is the first agenda item, started at six. So, there just seems to be a discrepancy in that.
I recall us starting at six. I think that first thing is, six o'clock.
Then, on page three, it says that I both moved the, moved that we approved the agreement with the Menuski School District and seconded the motion as well. I believe that I did both. I can't remember, I can't recall. Frankly, I didn't go look at the video to see which one I did, but there seems to be a discrepancy there.
Mm-hmm.
I'm now the dictator of the school board.
Yeah, the, the other thing we may want to discuss as a board is unless we take a roll call on the vote, we typically just say the motion passed.
Right.
And, and otherwise, it's unanimous or not. So, we don't often single out votes.
Right.
On that. We may want to just delete that. But we can make a decision whether we, on items that we want to do a roll call on.
Mm-hmm.
And then, under the stewardship plan, needs and funding recommendations, the very last paragraph says, "The board discussed a services run rate budget and asked what the administration need to provide to this, what the administration, I guess, needs to provide to the board." It would be helpful to get the budget planning process, or to the budget planning process that the board could see what wages and benefits look like on the tax rate. I just, that last part about in order to begin to comply with the governor's recent letter, there was no real discussion about complying with that letter because it's not really direction, it's just a letter at this stage.
So, you were, you were in the master planning, visiting committee work update?
No, I'm under stewardship plan, needs and funding recommendation, under F one, 2019 budget, the last paragraph.
Okay.
So, I have a change, that last sentence, to read something more like, it would be helpful to the budget planning process if the board could see what the impact of recently settled contracts is on the tax rate, because that was kind of what we had discussed, and just stop it there because we weren't really trying to figure out how to comply with the governor's letter. We were just, we mentioned that as a, as a parameter that we were sort of considering as we were budgeting, but it wasn't something we were trying to comply with yet.
Okay.
And then, on the next page, on page four, at the very end of, I guess it's the one, two, third paragraph, says Ms. Burkhardt had a concern about who should lead phase two of this work. But that seems to imply phase two of, it's not clear what we're, we're talking about here. I was more specifically concerned about who should lead phase two of the assessment of the high school and the middle school.
Yeah.
Yeah?
We can.
Just to clarify what my concern was there.
Yeah, the high school, middle school work.
Yeah. And then, these last two are smaller points. Under policy review, F six on student alcohol and drugs and firearms. I don't know if it's our custom to say that we said that they would be brought back for a third reading, these ones, but we did say that they were going to be for action. So, I just didn't know in terms of whether we needed to say that we had decided we would take action on this meeting in the minutes. And that was it.
Okay. Thank you, Bridget.
All right, any other comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
And so, this one, I'll just start out, but you have a retirement or a retirement letter from Patrick Phillips, our assistant principal at the Self-Burlington High School. And I think all of you, we all, we all heard from Diane Bugbee earlier, who couldn't stay around for the entire meeting, but, you know, I, I would be remiss not to, you know, our administrators play a critical role in the interface between our teachers and, and our students. And Mr. Phillips has been a steadfast steward of, of all of that, and he'll be greatly missed. He's made some great and effective impressions and changes on our district and on our high school. He's often the man behind, behind the scene, but he's obviously out there, too. And last year, you know, during the absence, the last few times of absence for, for Mr. Burke, he's been able to continue to endorse the, you know, the, the work that Patrick has wanted, but done it in a way that has been supportive of that and just been a, just been a strong, strong anchor. So, we're going to really miss him, but certainly, like, like all, we, we wish him the best and certainly would like to make sure that that's so noted.
Yeah, and on behalf of the board, I did write a letter to Pat Phillips acknowledging his contributions for the past 13 years to the district and 38 years in the profession of education. And of particular note, just the, the board's, you know, being grateful for his professionalism during the unusual circumstances of the past two years because he's really has, has stepped up in a big way. So, we will miss him.
Yeah.
Can I decline the consent? Or consent with an objection or something?
I think I said we reluctantly accepted it.
Okay, reluctance.
Yes, for now.
I'm curious, how would the process now start of like hiring a new person to take his position, or does somebody step up and then?
Good, great question. So, like any open vacancies, you heard a little bit earlier on in the, in the meeting. I mean, one of the things that we do is, again, and I don't want to paint the picture that we don't need an assistant principal, but first of all, we evaluate that, you know, does that position still, is it the same title? Does it have the same duties? You know, we answer those questions, assure that that job description's clear, and then we post it out. And so, we'll soon post the position. This is that kind of timeframe that we do that because a lot of administrators who might be looking, this is the time that they would look, and we, we don't want people to be signing a contract with another district and then not being able to fulfill, fulfill that. That's, that's actually not good. So, we want to pretty diligently work, so you'll, we'll see a posting. There'll likely be some student participation on this, as well as school board and community and teachers. And then, a few rounds of interviews, some site visits, and then a decision. And the board is the, is the hiring agent for, for the, for teachers and for administrators. And so, the board will have that opportunity to, to review some of the candidate information and to make that decision. And we'd like to do that, I would say. Again, we haven't set that timeline. I have these open positions, as we indicated earlier. I need to come up with that timeline for the board, but certainly, we'd like to have it done around that January, mid-January timeframe is what we're thinking. Mid to late January. So, we have work to do. Good question.
Next, we, we have the bid process or bid on the buses?
Yep, so, this is in response to the Menuski bus bid. What you have in here is the, a little information from John on, on the bus bid proposal. Again, what we did here is we looked at what we put in the, in the budget or what we provided to the bid was for the busing, the lease of the buses. And again, part of the provision was to have five-year or newer buses. And so, this satisfies that, that requirement. And on, apart with this, if I, if I may, there has been some questions. We, we have received the insurance information from Visbit, so we're good with that. I did forward that to some of you. I, I did not print out all of it because it's, you know, it's typical insurance stuff, but in there from Tin Vincent, from there, it says, "We're both under Visbit, it's absolutely appropriate." So, again, that's, I think satisfies that requirement. I do want to let you know that the Agency of Education has had a question about this. And again, they have some fairly new staff, and they were like, I don't, I don't think you can do this. We did use some of our local attorney resources to articulate exactly why we think it can happen. We're pretty confident that it's going to be A-OK to do. I have not yet heard back from AOE. I expect to hear a moment, you know, fairly soon, like this week. Both Sean and I, as we're anxious to, to keep moving forward. I did meet along with Deb Cordermarch, with Sean McMahon and the superintendent and his finance manager to talk about some of the, the logistics of, of the pickups and times and cancellation and things of that nature. So, we're, we're well on our way.
Thank you for putting that down, Elizabeth.
All right, move on to AP Order 19, under agenda item 14. Any questions, comments?
I move that we approve the check to Navy and Chase in the amount of $50,000, $149. $50,000, $149.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. We have a few signatures.
Yeah, you guys, I'll have some, some signatures, too.
Oh, yeah, I also want to.